I'd like to start off by introducing members of the board, starting at the board's far right. The audience is far left is Jerry Potamus, who's an associate member. Frank Duffy, who is a full-voting member. Mark Fineran, who is a full-voting member. My name is James Morris. I'm currently a full-voting member. Scott Peterson, who is the vice chairman. Suzanne Murphy, who is our clerk. And Tony Petrucci, who is an associate member. We're also joined this evening by Paul Haverdey of Blatman Barbauski-Haverdey Silverstein LLC Consultants, provided by Mass Housing. George Pucci, who is special town counsel on this matter. We're also joined by Noreen Stockman, the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary. Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws and reviewing and voting on this application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and the public to allow for a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process in 190 days and reaching a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read from the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representatives will then have, make a presentation. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only at the project and conclude an opinion in favor or opposition or to ask a question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It will amplify your voice and record the audio for FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board should then discuss the proposal amongst themselves, then make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of three members, a majority, is required for the approval of a comprehensive permit. Any zoning board of appeal decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass General Law Chapter 40A and B. First up on this evening's agenda is a public comment session. This public comment is reserved for anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public wish to make a public, any public comment about anything that is not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Next, we have a continuation of Application 93-23, Falmoth-Sutherley LLC requesting a comprehensive permit to construct 300 units of rental apartments throughout five separate buildings, a clubhouse, and amenities. The subject properties are number zero and 375 Sandwich Road, East Falmoth. So there's one addition to the file. I was not present at the last meeting. I have watched the meeting on, the recorded meeting of the FCTV and supplied the record with the required Mullen affidavit. That paperwork is now in the file.
Good evening. David Calhoun for Saxon Partners, the applicant. Just quickly, the agenda that we shared with the ZBA administration administrator and what we'd like to work through tonight is what was discussed last. Hearing is a peer review report from the town's peer review engineers, Beals and Thomas. And I don't know if you also have CEI here as well to provide their peer review. And then there would be a response from our engineers, Allen and Major, once we conclude that. We were going to discuss the shadow study, but we're going to put that off because there was a request from one of the abutters that we modeled to include a property over on 52 Harris Hill. So we'll add that to the modeling, so we'll have that for the next meeting. After we go through the peer review, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major would like to walk you through what we learned during the balloon test. And then we'd like to follow that up with next steps and talk with the board about whether it be a work study or group or just allowing us some time to present some new ideas. And with that, Beals and Thomas.
Mr. Calhoun, I think we'd rather hear from your engineer first, if it's all right, and then we'll hear from our peer. Just looking for, yeah, thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates, having an office address at 10 Main Street in Lakeville. Very, very briefly, Mr. Chair and members of the board, we have received the peer review letter from your consultant, Beals and Thomas. We have reviewed it. We have not provided yet official comment. We knew we were coming in front of the board this evening. We knew Beals and Thomas was going to present their findings. So we like to look at things in a wholesale approach to acquire any additional feedback necessary to factor into our responses, and then we'll ultimately do so. I think what I can say very succinctly, hopefully, is the, the peer review that was provided to us, we feel we can satisfactorily address. There are a number of comments on there that seek clarification or some additional data from us, and we're confident in our ability to provide that in a manner that I think will ultimately be satisfactory to your engineer from Beals and Thomas. They also deferred their stormwater peer review to CEI, who performed that review on behalf of the town. We'll respond to that in kind as well. And again, our comments to the CEI peer review, which was done a few weeks back, is that with some clarification, some additional data, we're confident that we'll be able to provide satisfactorily, satisfactory results to them as well. I'm here this evening to happily walk through any individual comments the board would like to focus on. I didn't know if Beals had any individual topics that they wanted to focus on, but I'm here at your discretion engineering-wise for that aspect.
Does the board have any specific questions at this time, or would we rather hear from our peer and then direct questions back? Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, Matt Cody of Beals and Thomas. We performed the peer review on behalf of the board for this project. We issued our letter on February 5th, a few weeks back at this point, which listed several comments.
That is the law. Is there anyone wishing to photograph or video? If you would just state your name for the record, just step to the microphone, sir. Thank you, sir.
Sorry for the interruption. My name is Eric Schwab. I'm from Bardspall.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schwab. Thank you.
So again, we noted several comments, you know, again, as the applicant indicated, requesting clarifications, requesting some additional information. As the applicant has noted, they have not yet responded. So to that end, I mean, we did have several comments related to some of the waivers and how they were formulated and some blanket waivers that we wouldn't necessarily recommend the board grant, you know, basically requesting waivers from sections of the bylaw that have multiple facets. So we'd want them to drill down and, you know, be specific about what they're actually seeking relief from instead of just granting, you know, a waiver to a whole section. Other points are just the other things, the other land that the applicant controls in the area and just seeking what the intent is of that land relative to this project just from some permitting concerns. Obviously, you know, from a MEP standpoint or anything like that, you know, the project would have to come in wholly now instead of, you can't do it in phases or pieces. So we're interested in, I mean, they believe they control another 30 or so acres in the area. So we'd want to, you know, have some clarification, again, from a permitting standpoint, what the intent for that land is. You know, the project is obviously very dense for the neighborhood or the, or the neighborhoods exists. It's primarily single-family homes. This is 300 units going into basically a residential neighborhood. So we'd just like them to clarify, you know, the needs for that. If, if, you know, if there's any feasibility to being less dense or how that could work. There are some concerns about the setbacks. Some of the buildings are closer to the property line than is required, and they are requesting relief from that. But again, with, you know, the size of the property and the density, we're just looking for some clarification on if that's actually needed or not. Parking, they do have enough, you know, they, there is adequate room to provide the parking required. However, they are deferring several spaces that they don't want to construct initially and just kind of hold that space in reserve for future, if, if in case that parking is needed in the future. So I guess we would just noting that to the board and deferring to your comfortability with that. If they're, you know, the, they do are going to, with the size of this facility, of this facility of this size, we assume there's staff. They'll also be needing to be there eventually 24 hours a day. So where do they park relative to, you know, the residential parking provided and again at a reduced rate? So we're just looking for some clarification there. The project will be, requires a wastewater treatment facility and an onsite, an onsite leaching fields. For this, for a project in, of this size that falls under DEP jurisdiction, they will, applications will need to be filed with DEP for, you know, to construct a system like that. And so that's a pretty rigorous process. I know the board probably has concerns about it, but DEP will, you know, obviously act in the best interest of the town. And they do bring the Board of Health in on that for site visits, et cetera. So the, and there is, are also comment periods available during that process. So if the board has, you know, additional concerns beyond what DEP might pose, there is availability to do that. But it is largely a DEP process. And then also kind of getting back to like the, the land that they have, they are subdividing the land. So we did have several questions about, you know, the subdivision and how they're doing that. Your regulations require certain things when that's happening. So we're looking, seeking some additional information regarding that. But all in all, I guess we look forward to, you know, seeing their applicant's response and start to work through some of these questions. If there is anything the board would like to discuss specifically, I'm obviously here to do so, but.
So questions, specific questions from board members? We'll start with you, Tony.
Is this just directed to our peer? Oh, I'm sorry. Is this just directed to our peer or in general?
In general.
Okay. Why are you concerned with Parker Mill Road? You brought that up in your report. And the use of it?
Not necessarily the use of it. So the parcel that they control to the north has frontage on Parker Mill Road. But now with the subdivision they are creating, that parcel will now have frontage from like the New Road and Sandwich Street.
And the concern is what? I mean, how they're going to?
It's just provide, you know, it's just, you know, what is seemingly kind of a landlocked parcel is now being given additional frontage.
You also seem to have a concern about the use of the rest of the land. That's not mentioned anywhere. You brought that up in your report. Why is that a concern that's important?
Again, because if there's future plans for developing of that land, that would need to be kind of brought into this process initially now. Again, there's like different permitting thresholds for like trips and traffic and different things like that. They can't present the project in like phases. It needs to be all presented initially. So I guess we're just questioning if there's like future, if there's future plans for those parcels that would need to be, again, like kind of, you know, they can't, they can't hide the fact that they have those parcels and then develop them later. It's going to be, you know, it's going to all be done in a single kind of process.
Couple more quick questions. You know, their plans right now are to pretty much clear-cut everything before they construct, start construction. We're very concerned, well, I am very concerned about screening for the abutters. I'm not going to get into the balloon study. I was there, I saw that. At 42 and a half feet, not 62 feet. But based on where these so-called garages are, that's supposed to be used for screening and the setbacks that they're proposing, pretty much all the trees are going to go or they're going to die because you have to dig a foundation. Now, would it not be good practice to have a certified arborist go in and mark trees that cannot be touched, that should stay in place? Is that, is that a normal practice that they should have an arborist do that and then mark them?
I guess, I guess, I'm not sure what you mean by can't be touched. I mean, I guess there are.
In other words, should stay in, so in other words, should stay in place. Now, we're going to lose, if we, if this happens, they're going to lose everything along those garages almost because a foundation, you need to dig a hole, put a footing in. So given how close they're coming to the setbacks, you're pretty much going to kill every tree there. And again, I'm not going to get into the balloon thing, but that was only 42 and a half feet. 62 feet is going to be almost above those trees. We've got to be able to keep, the abutters have to be able to keep those trees in place, mature trees. And would it be normal or advisable to have an arborist mark the trees that shouldn't be taken out? Would it be advisable to request the applicant to move the buildings further in to safeguard those abutters? Let's say, I'm just going to just bring this up just to clarify for me. Let's say 50 feet versus what they want to do. I mean, is that an advisable thing to do to save some of the buffer zone for the abutters?
Sure. I mean, it's advisable to like request it, but again, I don't know that the applicant has to necessarily do that if that may, you know, like, I mean, it's their property. If they're requesting relief to do it as like designed, obviously it would be ideal to maximize and maintain as many of those trees as possible.
Well, I mean, if they're concerned about the community, I think they would at least listen to us. Obviously, we can't demand it.
Right. And I guess, I guess that's more my, yeah, it would certainly be advisable to ask, yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask? All right. I've got about, I'm not going to ask them. I've got about 40 questions on this, and obviously I have to give up my time here in a minute. Lighting has been a big concern for me anywhere in town for large projects. You brought it up as number 46. You call it light trespass.
Trespass.
Now, they're proposing downlighting. I think it's dark sky lighting it's called.
Sure, yeah.
But yet, I don't think there's any way they're going to be able to maintain all of that light on site. I think you pointed that out.
There is, there is some minimal trespass onto some of the abutting properties with some like relocation of the lights typically or lowering of those lights that can typically be addressed.
So the point is that there is a means of, well, eliminating the light trespass?
We would imagine so, yes.
Oh, we'd imagine, all right. My last question, I promise. In our first meeting, a neighbor on Pitch Pine Lane was very concerned about a retaining wall. Now, number 42 talks about 11-foot retaining wall. Do we have anything we can put up on the screen to talk about, to show where that 11-foot screen, retaining wall would be? Because that's quite high. And, and what would that infrastructure, how would it be built? Because that, that's, that requires engineering.
Yeah.
Do we have anything that we can put up to show everybody?
I believe it's, I mean, it's, it's along the driveway as it goes into the site.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's needed to build the driveway to like, you know, to the grades that they're shooting for. So I guess from that standpoint, it's a necessity.
It's a necessity because of where the road is going to be? Or is it a necessity because I don't see, there were no topos really for me to interpret? So I can't tell if the road needs to be moved to avoid that or even if it's moved 10 feet, will that avoid that? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's something they, I would, I guess it's something we could ask them to evaluate.
Well, I would like to do that.
Yeah.
And I just want to say that our engineer agrees with that.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's certainly, it's, it's not uncommon for a retaining wall, I guess, of that size to be built to necess, you know, to, based on site characteristics and the grading in that area needs to come up.
I agree with you. I don't think it's uncommon. But what we're dealing with is a monstrosity of a development up against one and a half, two-story houses. So to these folks who have trees right now to look at a monolithic 11-foot, I don't even know how long it's going to be, it's, it, that is quite, it's quite a change.
Sure.
And I think that we have to have the developer look at it. I'm not sure what the practicalities are involved there because I don't have plans I can evaluate for topo or sca, or even scale. Well, I know the scale, but it's, it's difficult to do. I, I thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Suzanne?
I also had questions on the 11-foot retaining wall safety-wise for kids. I think if, if you, if I read, because once again, I couldn't see it either, it's near the entrance.
It, as the road comes in, I don't know if the, the road comes in, you know, the road comes in and it bends, it gets, it's along the top there, along that bend along the property line.
And from what I envisioned from the school bus stop, this is where a lot of the cars are going to be parking and the kids will be jumping, you know, playing all around waiting for the bus.
I believe the school bus stop is proposed much closer to Sandwich Street.
Sandwich Road.
Or Sandwich Road, sorry.
Yeah, but the, but if you drive down Sandwich Road now and you watch the school bus, the cars are parked down the side streets. You know, two or three, you know, there's not 300 units down each side street, but there's dwellings. And there will be many, I don't know how many students there's going to be with 300 units, but many. And these cars will be all parked down the street every afternoon. I, I drive down that road every day to go to work. And, but I had safety concerns on that 11-wall, never mind aesthetics, the 11-foot wall myself.
I mean, a wall of that size per code, you know, needs fences and fall protections and all those things will be part of.
It's going to need to keep kids away from it.
Yes.
Yeah. And then I also wanted to agree with Tony on the, I think, 50-foot buffer. I mean, when we were there looking at those balloons, I mean, it's crazy to just clear cut right behind all those houses. It's crazy. It's going to ruin their lives. It's tough. And we'll just have to keep asking, I guess. And then I also saw that you need 104 charging stations because that's what regulations say, which I think is great. I don't know how they'll manage that through their property management, I guess, on who gets what. And that's how that happens. Okay. And did we take any gas traps or anything in for runoff from all these vehicles that are going to be parking all of a sudden in this pristine area? They're going to have salt, you know, sand, all the stuff we all just dragged into our house from this last storm. We're going to have a lot of cars, filthy, draining into the ground.
I guess I defer to CEI on that. You know, that's more of a stormwater issue and how, how those are all treated. We didn't get into that so much.
You didn't get into that?
But, but I agree. I mean, obviously, at 300 units, at, you know, a car or fractions of car, you know, 1.5 cars per unit or something, I mean, it's a lot of vehicles.
Yep. Okay, Tony had a few in mind, so I'm good. Thank you.
Scott?
Okay. Mr. Cody, there's 52 items in your report, and I think I believe that a lot of them should be able to be bridged relatively easily. But with that said, what are the top three or five issues that you see that we really should be focusing on? And obviously, the number one that kind of comes to mind is what's the utilization of the, the other lots that the, that the owner has?
That, that would be the big one for me.
Okay.
It's just, yeah, like, again, because from a permitting standpoint, projects of this size, if there is future plans, I mean, maybe there isn't future plans for those lots, but if there are, you know, the town would need to, or should be advised to know about it now and not late, you know? They can't come back, you know, two years from now and say, well, we're going to put up another 300 over the, you know? It needs to be a more transparent process now.
How about number two or three? If anything sticks out?
Um, nothing in particular. I mean, I guess the, the, I mean, obviously the stormwater, though we didn't get into it, is obviously a big thing. There's a lot of it. A lot of impervious area going out there as opposed to what's out there now, which, you know, a single-family home. And the other thing, I guess, would be like kind of alluded to, not necessarily concerned, but I mean, the wastewater and the, and the treatment plant, the DEP process. Like I said, I don't think the town should necessarily be concerned about, you know, you know, the design of that system because again, DEP is going to thoroughly vet it, but something that is going to need to be vetted. I mean, it's a pretty substantial system. It's a lot of flow. So those are kind, you know, they have, DEP has their work ahead of them, you know, to like, again, for, and especially being on the Cape and the sensitivities to the, you know, esteride and all that stuff like this, it's going to be pretty scrutinized. So I can, I can envision what they have in, I can envision maybe what they're coming in with, changing, or, you know, it'll evolve.
So from your peer review, are you still responsible to follow that process through the DEP permitting?
No, not typically.
All right.
Again, like the DEP is going to do their, their part. I mean, again, the system that size, it needs to be permitted through them, and they pretty much will dictate that process.
Understood. I guess the fundamental here has been that the DEP has about a 10 milligrams per liter on the nitrogen, and the applicant had, I believe, had discussions with some folks here in, in Town Hall that potentially to go to six or three, or three milligrams. And obviously, anything above zero adds to the issue that we have there. So I was just hoping for another set of eyes on the process.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I mean, guess what? We've invited, there isn't really, there isn't really anything to review. It's kind of more like, you know, to be determined, you know, at that, during that time. It's kind of a box on a page now.
Right. I wasn't even aware if they've put in an application or anything.
I don't believe, not, not that I'm aware of, no.
All right. Thank you. No further questions.
I don't really have a lot of questions at the moment. I'm hoping that their engineer will go through these things in order for, in order for us to keep track of them. But one that does stick out is I'm curious about what they're looking for with the garages, the waiver there. But again, they can answer that. And then I think the staff parking and the loading zones need to be addressed or clarified a little more.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, typically for residential, it's not something that's required. But again, with, with a facility of this size, it's something I think we know, you know, there's move-ins, move-ins, move-outs, like, there's going to be some frequent activity, you know, UPS, FedEx, Amazon trucks. Like, it's going to be pretty frequent, and these guys should have somewhere to go typically.
And we're kind of going to have to know the, the layout of the parking lot because, you know, again, firefighting is going to become part of this approach and, or our approach. And unless that's clarified, we don't know because you're looking at 90 feet to, you know, to safely and adequately and properly fight fires here. But I, I think I'll just be happier or wait until they can just go through your points one at a time and, and we can take notes and then wrestle with what is left over at the end.
Yeah, I agree. We typically, you know, once we get this response, we can work through it and then, you know, see what's left as far as like concerns.
I think that makes the most sense.
Yep.
And as long as we approach it in your order, just to keep it clear in everybody's mind and anybody who's participating, I think that's all I have for the moment.
Yeah, as we, as we work through it, we'll, we'll maintain that order. Like this, now that this letter's been prepared, it's just going to be adding in response, you know, it's, it's going to keep the same format and so everything can be tracked.
Yeah, it's, it's obviously easier to do it in a miracle order. So that, that's all I really have at the moment.
Just a few questions to follow up on. My fellow members have asked quite a few of the questions that I was thinking about, but I would like to just focus briefly on the wastewater treatment plant permit from DEP. And you said there'd be a, they involve our Board of Health in the process. How does that work, if you can tell us?
Typically, the regulations say when there's going to be site visits and different things that they'll want to conduct, and the Board of Health will be invited to all those. So whether the board, I guess, I guess I can't guarantee that the Board of Health will participate, but you assume a project of this size, they would.
I would expect that they would participate.
Yes.
We will certainly ask them to.
Yes.
Now, how long does the process take? Are you familiar with that?
It would probably be pretty extensive. It would probably be lengthy. I mean, I can't, it's hard to say exactly.
Six, six months, a year?
At least.
Okay. Yeah, apparently.
I would, I would think.
Now, I saw one of the comment in, I can't remember in whose report it was, but it said that, I recognize we're not really getting into stormwater right now, but it, the importance of a operation and, and maintenance plan for the project when it is complete and operational. We have not seen that yet? That's not something that's been reviewed yet?
We haven't reviewed it from a stormwater standpoint, no. I guess we would defer to CEI on that.
All right.
But you were correct. I mean, like with, with the volume of water and the number of systems and infiltration systems and catch bait, like, it's, it's a system that's going to be, need to be continuously maintained.
By maintaining, you mean cleaned and?
Cleaned, monitored.
Monitored, okay.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you.
You mentioned that, uh, there'd be an MEP review, Mass Environmental Policy. Is that part of the?
Not currently.
Okay, not, oh, thank you.
But, but, like, because of the scale of the project, then they're not really hitting the thresholds, I guess that's why we ask, if there is future development planned for these parcels, that might kick them into a threshold that would require that. So that's why we're, we're, you know, asking now.
It, it would kick them in to a state-driven process rather than our process.
Well, both.
Well, they'd have to agree that they have future development for that land.
Right.
A poten- uh, but if, if they don't, it's a moot point.
Correct.
Okay.
I believe, yes. Yeah, they, they, you know, there's, there's traffic, there's triggers for traffic, wastewater, different things. Right now, they're not hitting them, but again, with an additional 30-something acres out there, if they were gonna choose to do something with that, now potentially, they do trigger some of those thresholds. Yep.
Anyone on the Board have any additional follow-up questions?
I'm not sure, I could not hear Jerry's question. I could not hear Jerry's question about triggering, what you were talking about triggering.
The, 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 the potential for, like, MEPA filing for a project this size? I mean, typically, bigger projects like this would need to go to MEPA. Like I said, right now, it doesn't seem like they would have to, but again, if there's future development or other pieces of the puzzle that we're not, you know, that aren't clearly stated at this point, you know, that they should be, because then it, then it would might, it might trigger that MEPA review.
Which is likely why they're not explaining to us now. So we need to request that they tell us what they think they might be doing, I mean, I think we can all imagine what they might be doing, but I think that's a MEPA issue that triggers, that's very important to all of us in this town.
And, and they will also need a construction general permit with MEPA, correct? For the volume of land that they're clearing?
I don't believe, not, again, if it's just limited to the, like, the Lot 1 that they're talking about.
Right, but isn't it clearing over an acre?
Oh, oh, no, that, that's NIPs, that's a stormwater, for this, that's a stormwater permit, yes, they will need that.
Jerry, have a question.
That was clarified, it's a.
NIPs, NIP, oh, yeah, they're definitely gonna need that, yeah, and, and disturbance of an acre triggers that.
Correct.
They're gonna, they're gonna have NIPs for sure, yes.
Based on my understanding, that's almost like a notice and go because it's already been printed and everything else what the general permit will contain. So you file for it, you meet whatever the requirements are, but I don't think they're aggressive other than you're disturbing over an acre of land, and then, I mean, the permit's already online.
Yes. They will, they will need to provide, um, what typically is referred to as a stormwater, a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is like a SWIP. The SWIP will be filed with the Conservation Commission, it, those things will, you know, once, and those are all on the file, it gets back to the maintenance of those, you know, those things, the maintenance during construction, all those things will be included in that document.
Mr. Chair.
Counsel.
Oh, there we go. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, I'm, and members of the public, I'm George Pucci. I haven't, uh, introduced myself before tonight, I was at the last hearing session. I'm just introducing myself, that's why I am, I'm not gonna talk too much tonight. I just wanted to note, Mr. Chair, I have a number of questions and concerns arising from, um, uh, Mr. Cody's report, not questioning Mr. Cody's report, but follow-up issues and, and concerns that I have that I wanna note to the Board. With regard to the, you know, the procedure for the onsite septic system, the stormwater issues, um, what I would recommend is, I, I would like to do a little bit more due diligence with department heads in, in the town, and then, um, see the applicant's response to Mr. Cody's report, and then I, I would recommend maybe having a little bit of time on the agenda for me to present kind of formally to the Board about my recommendations on, and advice on, on certain of these issues, if that's okay.
I think that's very prudent. Uh, Matt, I just, I'm sorry, Jerry, you done?
Uh, yes, I was just trying to.
Any other follow-up questions? So I guess, a question I've got, Matt, it's, a lot of it has to do with the onsite wastewater treatment, and I think that the Board is gonna be looking for some additional tasks out of you, uh, as our peer, particularly during any public comment after a, an application to DEP is made, just to see, or to advise the Board or guide the Board as to any comments that are made, uh, the application process, location of the plant, what the potential impacts could have on the abutters, hazardous materials, uh, onsite and so on. Issues, I think, as to local wildlife, uh, this particular location is up against the Kumaneset River, which is, we've spent a considerable amount of time and money, essentially improving and taking out cranberry bogs and such, uh, just to make sure that we're overseeing the EPA filings, that, uh, they're being made and to comment on them as to the, any relief that, uh, they're requesting. Traffic. Marine, administratively, am I forgetting anything here? In terms of additional tasks for our peer?
Um, I think you probably have captured everything thus far, and we can certainly email, um, as other things come up.
I'll probably, some additional questions after you with the applicant's engineer reconcile and try to, uh, address a lot of the issues, so thank you.
Sure.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, I'll go very quickly through, I just wanted to try to relay some concerns that the Board has raised relative to the Beals and Thomas review, review, just so you know where things are headed. It is our full and clear intent, we will provide a written line-by-line response to all of the peer reviews that we have received, so that way, the Board, your consultants, everybody in town can track the responses, our collective responses, to any issues that were raised by Beals and Thomas, CEI, uh, the Water Department, et cetera. So, so that is forthcoming. So as part of those, uh, just going backwards through my list, identifying a handful of things, the first one being MEPA, the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. So the necessity of us to file an application with MEPA is being reviewed, and MEPA, as Mr. Cody pointed out, has several thresholds in it, and if the project exceeds those thresholds, uh, it requires a filing, so we're reviewing that. One of the thresholds is existence of a state permit, which we will have here relative to the groundwater discharge permit. And then the other is the size of the project, the physical size of the project in terms of impervious area created, and that is the area that we're studying to see if this project qualifies to, uh, require filing with MEPA under what's called an environmental notification form. And then any additional review that MEPA determines necessary, necessary will stem from that. What I'll point out is the MEPA process is advisory, um, they're obviously looking at it from a state-level perspective for a number of different aspects. Stormwater, traffic, um, environmental concerns relative to wetlands that are primarily jurisdictional, i.e., onsite, um, they can look at wastewater, they will look at, um, uh, natural heritage, rare species, historical issues, so they have a laundry list of things that we'll be looking at, and we will be required to respond to, which we will. The thing that I, I think Mr. Cody was alluding to and this, of concern to this Board, is MEPA looks at what's called segmentation. They want to ensure that an applicant filing up, an application with them says, well, we're gonna build just this. They want us to give them a full scope, say, well, we're gonna build this, but we have the opportunity to build X, Y, and Z in addition to that, so they can be reviewing the full scope from a high-level altitude from the state perspective. So we will narrate on that. They will also require that we provide an alternatives analysis, which is build less, don't build, build more, build differently, build with more buffers, um, things of that nature. So all of the feedback that we're hearing from the Board, from the public, from the neighbors, uh, that all is part and parcel to the descriptions that we'll put in place with MEPA. When that is filed, it is noticed publicly in the environmental monitor, and everybody, not literally everybody in town, but the Boards in town are notified, the Board of Health, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, um, are notified of that filing, and MEPA will then solicit comments from the town and the public. Everybody's entitled to speak, and then they will respond accordingly. So that process is underway, and we will continue to look through that. Working backwards, uh, hearing concern about stormwater, um, even though Beals and Thomas did not conduct the review, on its CEI did, um, let me reassure you that we do have a compl- a full complement of stormwater management systems in place with gas traps, with hoods, um, that are designed to collect any runoff solvents from all of, all of the vehicles, oils, gases, fuels, salts, um, they're collected, they're handled, they're cleaned, they're treated before that ground, before that water is allowed to recharge. In the application materials that were provided to the Board is an operation and maintenance plan. It outlines all of the components that we have in the site plans, it outlines a very specific maintenance schedule for those to be followed, and we would envision that should this Board ultimately issue a permit, there's a condition that we follow the stormwater operation and maintenance plan, because that would be the expectation you would do to most other projects in town. So that is in there. I encourage you to take a look at it. I'm sorry?
Who's gonna monitor that, and how is that monitored to assure that it's done?
So, so through the Chair to address the question of who is responsible for monitoring it, so the applicant is responsible to self-maintain it, they're responsible to keep the records. Should this Board wish those records to be made available, they can be made available, but it, it is a self-reporting responsibility, sir.
So we could condition that, uh, yearly or some such, you could deliver those records to the, or to Health, to the Health agent, or would that be the?
It, through the Chair again, it wouldn't be unusual for a condition to exist, that those reports be provided, so.
It certainly would provide comfort to everyone.
The ME, uh, excuse me, the wastewater treatment plant process, I won't belabor it, it is very lengthy, it is ongoing, we are studying the scope of work, as I've mentioned to this Board in the, in the two prior hearings. Regarding staff parking loading zones, we will provide you a response to that because it did come up. You know, we have managed projects like this before, so we have a prescribed scope of work that we'll outline for you. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm doing the same, so I apologize. So two, two more quick things, again, I just wanted to trap everything for you. The, the notion of the wall, so if I could ask, Jack, could you advance just to the site plan for just a moment? Back one, sir, there you go. Uh, I just want to provide a little bit of clarity and a little more narrative. The wall that we're talking about is here. Uh, it's right here, right as the road comes in, it curves left, and then it curves right, so it's right along that property line. So it is, in fact, separate and distinct from the potential of a bus stop and passenger cars potentially queuing on the site driveway, waiting for the school bus to pick up their students, so they are separate. Now, the necessity of the wall that came up through there, I understand that it's concerning to the Board in that we have just provided notation of the wall, um, the reason for that at this stage is, the intent of the comprehensive permit plans is to provide in a preliminary manner all aspects of the site that are required. We have not provide a, provided a full and final design of this retaining wall, but of course, that will be provided. A building permit is required for any wall that's over four feet in height, because this wall is 10 to 11 feet in maximum height, um, that we are required to do a structurally engineered design and go to the Building Department where that is adequately reviewed. And as part of that, the fall protection, whether it's the guardrails for the cars or fence protection for children to avoid them jumping over the wall, that will all be annotated on there and will be subject to review. The real necessity for the wall that's here, though, is, um, there is actually just a unique topographic depression that exists right here. It straddles the property line between our subject property and the, the neighbors, and essentially, in order for us to build the road at a reasonable grade elevation through there, we have to fill in that hole. We obviously cannot fill in on the property, on, on property we do not own, so that's why we've elected to do the retaining wall that's there. So just so that way, the Board is aware of, of, of why that's there.
Tony?
I'm sorry, and may I ask a question?
Certainly.
I brought up the 11-foot retaining wall because the abutters you're talking about, they're gonna be affected by this, are severely gonna be affected by it, and I think we all know that walls are built in different ways, different materials. I would like to know more about your design, materials to be used, because if I were, and we have to do the best we can to help the community get through this. If these folks are gonna be looking at that, whether it's one, two, three, whoever it is, these materials have to be quality, and there probably should be some vegetative buffer that goes in front of them, 11 feet, that, that's a monolithic level. So I'm not sure how, when we'll get a chance, or do we get a chance to see that? How do we condition that, Mr. Chairman? At this point, because it's not fair to these folks that are gonna be living there in, I think it's, uh, Pitch Pine Lane. That's my concern right now.
David Calhoun for the applicant. Just so that we don't spend too much time on it, this is one of the things that we were, wanted to talk to about the end of the meeting. We've been listening to the Board, we've been listening to the crowd, we've been listening to people that we met during the balloon test, uh, we hear the concerns. We had hoped to do a lot, had to have done a lot of this in working groups, uh, but we haven't had the option to do that. So at the end of the evening, one of our, might as well ask it now, our request is, we've been looking at these issues, where we talked to the person, excuse me, I don't have my laser pointer, but if you look right in the corner, uh, the people that live in the corner, they're asked us to look at, could we try to, uh, screen it out? What could we do? We're actually taking it one step further, we're looking to move the road. We're looking to take the curve out, we're looking to eliminate the retaining wall. In addition to that, uh, during the balloon test, and, um, Phil can walk you through the buffer, the buffer has been a big, big item. We hoped that the buffer would be much stronger. Even though it was not that strong, that's why we went with the idea of garages, because they create a strong buffer. But what we hope, if the Board will allow us to at the next meeting, is we'd like to present an alternate plan that takes the garages out of the buffer, uh, there's a young lady in the back, I, I don't know if she's here this evening, I think she is, she mentioned, you know, can you take the garages completely out of the buffer? Can you take what is now a 20-foot buffer, a 15-foot buffer? Selectman Brown asked us to try to push everything to a 50-foot plus buffer. That's what we're endeavoring to do. Some areas, the screening was pretty good, other areas, it wasn't great. But we wanna come back to the Board, uh, with a plan that shows that we listen to you. I can't say that we're changing the UNICO, but we do have an alternative plan that we think addresses most of the concerns that the people have raised, and will make them feel more comfortable. We get some great comments on our architecture, what our building's gonna look like, but they said, please just push them back. And we think we can do it, especially now that we have the peer review from CEI, we have the peer review from Beals and Thomas, we know we don't have stormwater problems, we don't, we know we don't have grade problems, we've been through conservation, we have no wetlands on any of these properties, we have no species on any of these properties. It's, it's, it's all on record with conservation, um, it's all been done, uh, you can look on the town's own GHD reports, there is no restrictions on this land from a development standpoint as it relates to national heritage, any of those items. But the key point is, we're listening to what the people have asked for. I think if you give us 45 minutes at the next meeting, we'd like to present that concept and see if it, um, addresses most of your concerns. I think it, I think it will take a, away a lot of the concerns and it'll push the buildings into our own property. So if you're okay with that, we'd like to do that at the next meeting.
Just looking at the math real quickly, um, where you have a 14-foot setback on one property line and 34 on the other, to move those both to 50, um, that would change your center green area and reduce it by 43 feet. So your center green area, that's about 107 feet, would drop down to about 64 feet. So that seems like it's achievable from your perspective?
That's where we're working.
Okay.
Because we went back, we were trying to create a grand common area, and when we went back and looked at it after the. went back and looked at it after the concerns we had from the neighbors, you know, we realized we don't have to have an awesome common area. We can just have a great one. And so we're going to shrink that, we're going to try to slide the buildings in. We got some pretty good ideas, and I think the board, you're not going to dance in the street, but you'll be at least, hey, they're listening to us, they're trying to get to some of the points we want. So if it's okay with that, we'll do that at the next meeting, but at least, you know we're already working on the wall. And if we can't fix the wall in the curve, we're more than happy with conditions on what it looks like.
I think improving the setbacks is going to be a significant improvement, I think, for the board. Is there any discussion about moving the, all the buildings further to the, I guess we call it the northwest, towards the center of the parcel? I think that would open up a lot of, I think it would alleviate a lot of concerns that abutters have.
We are currently holding this line right here, but we do have some creative ideas that are going to significantly open up the buffers on, you have on the, when you go around this side up here, when Peterson Development did their development, you have a 25-foot natural buffer that's supposed to be here. There's a 55-foot or 50-foot buffer up in here. And what we're going to try to do, just on our own property, we're going to try to pull everything so that we're at least 50 feet in from our property line with no structures above ground. We might have some drainage underground. We might have things like that. But we're trying to create a truly natural buffer, and we're going to try to push our buildings towards our own property line.
When you, when you do, when you bring this new plan in, are you going to address the entire chunk of property?
Excuse me?
When you bring the new plan, is it going to address all three lots? That was one of the things on our peer review.
The gravel pit, which is not part of this application, and I think I've said this before and I got booed, we bought that to protect our interest. We don't have any plans for that right now. We don't have any plans for the area in the front. What we did do, because we're required to, when we did our traffic studies, we had to provide calculations on what the traffic flows would be from this property up here. So what we had to do is we had to do calculations based on it being a nursery with the highest traffic volume that it could be used under current zoning. We had to do the same thing with the parcels in the front. So we had to load the traffic study with hypothetical uses. And I know you don't believe us, you don't want to hear it, but we do not have plans for the gravel pit right now, other than possibly working for wastewater over there, because one of the requests of the board of selectmen was when we look at our wastewater, try to look at doing a bigger system in case it is needed, whether it's by the neighbors or it's by the town, to tie in. So that's what we're looking at. In the front here, when we're done, part of our goal is to get the town to 10%. And you may not say that's something that they really want to do. We do. We want to lock out the competition. We want to have the best apartment building in town. That's what we want. And if we get you to 10%, no one can do anything on any of these as it relates to multifamily without the blessing of the town. So it's single family, or possibly a nursery, or a farm.
When you just said you did the highest traffic volume for the entire property, is that, do you mean the 11 single-family dwellings?
Right here.
I don't know. On our engineering, it indicated.
I'd have to cross-check the traffic study, and Jason Adams is not with me.
It wasn't 900, it was 11 single-family units, if I'm correct.
Correct. That's all that can be done there.
He said it wasn't really measurable or indicated that.
Yep.
Yep. Relative to all that, you know, we, we did ask, and I have the minutes here, you know, for the balloon tests to be at 62 feet. And I think had they been, then been, it had been done at 62 feet, I think everyone would have been shocked, because it goes considerably over the height of the trees. But, well, first off, let me state that I have complete confidence, or almost, I'm very confident, that whatever you're going to construct is going to be of quality.
Thank you.
I really do believe that. But, I mean, the neighbors really have to be considered, and, I mean, you have so much land there. And if you don't mind, I just was messing around today. I took some scissors, and I cut off everything you had. And I mean, you could fit all those buildings down the center of that property, and you could build your, well, actually, I got it as 12. I mean, you could put 12 more units in there. You could give everyone a considerable buffer, and, can you see what I have here? I mean, isn't that a, if you want to look at it, I mean, it seems to be, and I mean, you can mess with it as you like, but I think you can still build your 11, actually 12, and the buffers will be more than you're even asking. And I think it would go a long way to make the neighbors comfortable. It's not that difficult. You can move around with it. I mean, you can save a considerable amount of the woods that are there. And I mean, if you are only talking about putting 11 residences, I mean, this depicts 12. I mean, it gives the buffer, and I mean, as far as the firefighting goes, you could easily get your 90 feet here with, and keep the green space by using the fortified turf or whatever it is with the lattice under there. And I mean, you're talking about giving people, you know, a good, close to 100 feet, and you're still going to get everything you're talking about in there. And I think it would alleviate, something along this nature would really alleviate a lot of these people's problems. And it would go a long way to, because like I said, I, you guys build decent stuff, and to have a decent name in town, I mean, you know, there's other things. I mean, we're going to hit the 10%, but we're still going to have an affordable housing problem. And I've always advocated that the town should give the developer the land and have them develop something that's 50% affordable. I mean, we have parcels out there that you could do, or somebody else, but I mean, you have all that green space to spread this thing out. You can keep a lot of the trees that are there. I mean, hell, you could call it sandwich woods and charge more money. I mean, it's, but, I mean, leaving that open like that leaves a lot of us uncomfortable. I don't see how you're going to squeeze these borders in and still get the 90 feet that you're really required to fight the fires. I wish you'd consider expanding this and make it more linear. I think that would go a long way to keep these people happy. And, and I mean, it would, at this point in time, I was dissatisfied that the 62-foot balloon wasn't there. It really would have shocked these people and it would have shocked me. And I know what 62 feet is, because you had 40 feet there. All you got to do is stand back until you got four fingers at 40 feet, and you add two more, and you got 60. And it goes over the top of the trees. And, I mean, if you push that back and make it more linear, I think you're going to certainly make a lot of these abutters more happy, and it's still a nice project. You're still going to get your 11, well, call it 12. I mean, you can do townhouses in there. But to leave that land in the front open like that, just, you know.
And thank you for your ideas, and I appreciate it, and we'll, we'll look at it. And I think you'll be impressed with what we're trying to come back with when we come back to you next week.
I think you should use the whole, the whole thing, though, and, you know, and.
We're going to, our goal is to solve what we have here, try to get to the point where the board can say, okay, they listened to us, they listened to the public, they're creating their, we don't want to go into those woods, we don't want to go forward. Smart development calls for you to keep your development concentrated, and that's what we're trying to do. Because the smart growth people, if all of a sudden you said you're going to do three-story or two-story walk-ups and you're going to use all your land, that would be against all practices that everybody stood up and complained about. They want things natural. Give us a shot. Give us 45 minutes at the next meeting, and let us see it. Give us some time and open up for questions, and I think you'll be impressed with what we're going to try to do. I think some of the public will be less mad, and, but I'd like you to give us a shot, and if you're okay with it, we'd like to have Phil walk you through the balloon test and what we saw and what we came up with, so you can understand what we did, and if it's okay, I'm going to turn it over to him for.
I think there's one follow-up question.
Sure. There's two.
Sorry, I got your next, Eric. Thank you.
Mr. Calhoun, I'm trying to listen to you very carefully, and I appreciate what you may be doing about revising your plan. But I listened to you very carefully about the other parcels and keeping them open and top-of-the-line apartments. Would you consider, I'd like to see us condition this in a way that that front parcel remain open in perpetuity, as well as the sand gravel, or the gravel area, other than to use it for septic, drainage, whatever needs to be done, other than buildings? I'd like to see that condition put into this so that those two parcels remain open. I don't disagree with Mark. I would like to see, and I'm looking forward to seeing what you want to do, to see this pushed away from all the sidelines. But I'd like to have your immediate reaction to if we put a condition in like that.
Well, I think, first off, the application does not include that land.
And I understand that. And I understand, that's not what I'm, but that's not what I'm saying.
We're not in the business of giving away our property. I'm sorry.
No, no. I don't want you to give it away, but I was listening to everything you said, and everything you said indicates that you would keep that front piece open and the gravel pit open, except for maybe some septic or drainage uses.
At this point in time, but we don't know what's going to happen with that land in 10 or 15 years.
I don't understand what that means.
We're going to hold the property, and this, the process we have to go through here, at the rate things are going right now, if, if we're fortunate enough to get a positive vote at the end of the six months, we still have a DEP process to go through that's going to take a long time. We still have MEPA. So we'll be lucky to get in the ground for 12 months, okay? So if we get in the ground in 12 months and we build this and we lease it up, we're still looking out three to four years. And at that point in time, we still want to hold on to our land, because we don't know what the future will bring. We don't know what the town wants. We've already been in discussions with people who have approached us from different housing organizations, different open space groups that want it, that want to do things with it. And those discussions will take place. But you can't condition my permit that I'm going to give away my land.
No, that's not what I said. I'm asking you, I was looking for your reaction, based on what you had said to all of us about the green space in front and maybe the gravel pit being used for expansion and on septic. I'm simply testing the waters, and what I'm hearing from you is, no, we will not do that. It's not part of the permit, and we're just going to see what the future holds, what's going to be best for us, not necessarily the community in the surrounding areas, but what is best for us and your business. And I understand that, your business. You're going to have to earn money. But what is best for the community? And I'm about to get admonished here.
No, I'm not going to admonish anybody. For the record, Peter Freeman, attorney for the applicant. I sincerely understand and respect what you're asking, but Dave has been consistent. He's just being straightforward, and I understand, as I said, why you're asking that. And I have been part of conversations with at least one group. There's nothing all ephemeral at this point, but the possibilities are boundless in terms of perhaps future development, which is likely to be under allowable zoning if the town indeed stays at the 10%. Open space groups, as Dave said, there are some things that might happen, and it's not trying to be evasive at all. It's just the nature of the beast, what he's said consistently, and is saying now is, no. And you wanted an immediate reaction, so no. He's saying he wouldn't agree to an open space condition. We don't need to get into debates of the legal nature at this point in terms of the propriety of you putting such a condition or not, but for purposes of what we're asking you to focus on, it is the changes that Dave has already said are in the works, and let's deal with that, and let's go step by step. That's all, that's the only reason I stepped up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Eric.
Circling back to wastewater, and I understand it's speculative, and I understand what the selectmen had suggested. I think I understand, I think they're saying, you build a wastewater treatment plant that incorporates X number of private homes, then you turn that back over to the town. Are you going to run a private utility for the town?
It's simply, the request was, if possible, could you try to create additional capacity in case there are needs? The needs, we don't know yet. You could get shut down on your ocean outfall, and you may need that gravel pit. You may need to tie in the people to the south and east of us.
Okay, I think we're getting.
So it's just a keep-all options open request.
But the ocean outfall, let's not get into the ocean outfall, let's get into more immediately the TMDL requirement for that watershed. You're already going to be, I don't know if you can get away with 10 or whatever, that's a DEP issue. If you incorporate it, and I'm just picking out a number, if it's depending on the cost, 100 homes, so that it's, it's not for the entire town, it's a mini wastewater treatment plant, it might be a big septic tank system.
No, it would, what is required, what we have to do is we have to do a wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, that's what I would have thought.
And wastewater treatment plant, the levels that have been requested of your wastewater superintendent, and also in the letter that originally came out with the board of selectmen was to use best available technologies and strive to be a 3 milligrams per liter, per less. And I believe what the permit application that we're going to pursue with the town, excuse me, with DEP, would be based on a 30-day rolling average of 30 milligrams per liter, excuse me, three, three parts on 30-day rolling average, but the permit would be based on five, not 10. We're not, we're not going with the max that we could request.
Now, getting back, if we did that, if you did that with the town, is that wastewater treatment plant, you know, a smaller system? Do you envision that being run by you or run by the town, and then you're a customer of that?
Our plan is to build and operate the plant ourselves.
And then the town would tie in as you saw fit?
If the town requires to tie in, we would create a homeowners' association-type agreement where the town could tie in. If the town decides that they want to buy and own our plant, we're more than happy. Well, why don't open up discussions? We're planning to operate our own plant.
Okay. In this, following back to what triggers MEPA, I don't know if the, the DEP permit by itself triggers NEPA, unless it's because of the TMDL issues.
It does, it does not.
Okay, that's my, thank you.
I think at this point, we'd be happy to hear about the results of your balloon test.
So thank you again. I'll go through this fairly quickly, because what Dave has done is he's, he's actually sort of jumped to the end of what we learned while we were out there and how we can sort of address some conditions. So just as a reminder to the members of the board and the public, what we endeavored to do out there with the balloon test, and I was on-site. Um, just as a reminder to the members of the board and the public, uh, what we endeavored to do out there with the balloon test and I was on site along with a couple of other members from my team. Uh, we located the building corners at the nearest location to the neighbors based on what we heard from the initial meeting. Where the balloon test was brought up, which was float some balloons closest to where the impact zones would be. Um, we, we did in fact float them at the top of the fourth floor, which is forty-one and a half feet. Um, so sir, you are correct, they were not floated at the sixty foot height of the top of the building. Um, just jumping ahead to my last, uh, second to last bullet point, um, the tree canopy that was there really limited us from getting a balloon through there. You know, the canopy was such with, with the way the, the branches interwoven at the top elevation sixty, sixty-five, seventy feet. Uh, we couldn't reliably get the balloon there and I think those that were present on the site. Um, saw us replacing balloons, heard the balloons pop as they got that high and were popping within the tree line. So we weren't able to successfully get the taller ones up there. Um, what, what you may have seen when you were out there is we, we labeled three of the buildings, I'll show you on the next slide. Dual red balloons, dual blue balloons and dual red balloons alternating colors just so that way there was some differentiation for those that were seeing the balloons out there. And then as a reminder, we did do it for the entire period at a later point in the day from twelve thirty to about quarter of five. Um, we had those balloons up there and as the balloons were up, they would pop, we would replace them, so there were balloons reliably up that entirety of the time. Um, and I say that, that if there were folks out on the neighboring streets that I didn't see a balloon for a minute, it may have been under the process of being replaced. Um, but we did have them up for nearly the entirety of that, that period, so if you could, next slide please. Um, so here's what we learned, sort of jumping to the end and I'll show you some photographs of what we took out there. To the sir's point, the member's point, the tree canopy is about fifty to seventy feet. Um, and we know that from our ability to have floated the balloons at the forty-one and a half feet. Um, and then we also put a drone up in the air for a little while and in order for the drone to get some footage, we had to get the drone above the tree canopy so the drone could fly reliably. Um, we had the drone at about sixty-five feet, so you know, not discounting the members, four fingers, two fingers, probably right on the money. Uh, but based on where we were flying the drone, we were at about sixty-five, seventy feet, so. Um, as you all leave here tonight, if everybody goes back, the balloons aren't there anymore, you still question where are we? Um, the canopy is likely the, the relative top of the buildings that are out there. Um, so in absence of having the balloons there, that's what you can look at. Um, we also, some, you know, some feedback that we heard, you know, primarily, primarily negative, we understand. Um, the balloons are intended to float vertically, the measurement is taken vertically, if there's wind, it sort of skews to the side, we've all seen the car dealerships. Uh, where it all blows to the side, um, so dependent on when you saw the balloons, some of them may not have been true vertical, they float to the sides back and forth. Certainly that does in fact adjust to the visual representation of the height. Um, but we did our best to make sure those balloons are up there as quickly as possible so everybody in this room and this board could see those. Um, but when the string was not vertical, it was not at the exact elevation, um, so we know that, we recognize that. And what we also know from the forest coverage out there is that the forest is actually pretty high, the tree cover is really at the top elevation. Um, the stuff that's on the ground, there's some white pines out there, there's some, um, some briars that grow in, there's some low ground cover that when the leaves pop. Uh, it's really at a relatively low level, so what you're left with is, using my arms. Stuff down here sort of grows in, it obscures and the stuff at the higher level, that grows in, that obscures, that's where the leaves pop, but then there's a. A section in the middle that is sparser than we would have liked it to have been. Um, and then what Dave had pointed out during his prior discussion is. Uh, we have a particular area of focus, obviously, we were specifically requested by the homeowners to review. The buffer zone from their individual properties specifically at, um, off of Harris Hill Road and off of Captain Bonniger, excuse me, I'm gonna get the name wrong. Those, those enjoy having a buffer zone created by the subdivision that were created. Um, and we really wanted to see what that buffer zone looked like and unfortunately, there's actually little to no vegetation in that buffer. Um, so there's, there's a problem in there that what we denote as buffer existing under the subdivision, there's really not much in there and I'll show the board a couple of pictures in a moment, so. If you could advance. Uh, this is the site plan we looked at earlier, next slide please. Uh, this is just a refresher as to what we floated, um, building three, building four and building five, two red corners, two blue corners, two red corners. These are the ones that we had up during the entirety of the day. Um, and again, we did that under the direct interest of this is where our neighbors are, this is where our neighbors are, are, these are where our neighbors are. Um, so we wanted to float the balloons that were as close as possible to them, that's the biggest massing and scale that they would see, next slide. Um, so here's some representation, I mentioned, we had the drone up in the air, this is the drone photograph. You're overlooking thirty-six Captain Bonniger Lane. Uh, you know, the, in the lower right-hand corner for all of these slides, it may not be readily apparent at this scale, but this denotes where the picture was taken. Whether it was an on-the-ground or an aerial one, so you can follow that to know where you are in the slideshow. Uh, but again, with the drone up above the trees, by, by GPS on the drone, we're at sixty-five, seventy feet from the ground position to get above that canopy. Um, these are ground photographs, again, also at thirty-six Captain Bonniger. Um, we are standing in the buffer zone to the subdivision, this is property owned by Peterson. Um, this is the twenty feet that would have joined thirty-six Captain Lane. Uh, as you can see from the photograph, it's a little dark on the screen projector, but there's, there's really no growth in here in the twenty feet to really speak of. Um, there is also a lot of debris in here, some construction debris, there's fallen wood, there's timbers. Um, there's a lot of stored materials back there that exist within that buffer. And if you advance to the next slide, um, you'll see more of that debris in here and more of that lack of buffer zone through there. Um, what the board may note, the yellow sign that's on the tree generally represents where our property begins. Uh, so some of the debris extends on to the subject property that we're talking about. Uh, but the walking away point is that what should be there is buffer, what's intended to have been a buffer under the subdivision created. There's, there's negligible vegetation there. Next slide please. Um, these will be very difficult to see, admittedly at this scale, with this illumination, with the screen projector. Um, so you'll have to trust me and I'll happily provide these pictures to the board. Where the green arrows are located, um, there is a visible balloon in this photograph. It is there, when you zoom in, you will see it. Um, this is the view from thirty-six Captain Bonniger Lane, uh, and again, the, the balloon floated in the distance and you can see through the tree line that's there. From fifty-two Harris Hill Road, uh, which again was a specific of butter that asked us to be present on her property and take some photographs. So I'm standing, uh, at the fence line of her property peering into. Um, the subject property that we're talking about this evening and the takeaway from this photograph is obviously what I mentioned. At the ground, there's, there's very little vegetation to speak of, it really starts thickening as you move up into the tree line. Obviously, given that it was taken in February, um, all of the leaves have dropped, so you're looking through the tree trunks and the branches. Um, from that same location, um, we have the balloons floated, um, they're noted with the arrows in these locations. Um, I'm just showing the one on the right to show the scale, this is at the forty-one and a half feet, again viewed from that same location. Um, to get a, a general perspective is there would be a building along this line, the upper arrow is a balloon. The lower arrow is actually one of my guys standing in his high vis gear to denote the building corner. Uh, so between these two arrow points would roughly reflect the height of a building. To the top of the fourth floor, not the top of the roof, with the top of the roof being set back because of the way it's pitched, another fifteen, twenty feet inward to the building. Uh, just walking through very quickly, uh, a treetop view, Meredith Drive, I am floating over with the drone, I'm, I'm over. One of the balloon points at the back corner of building three. Um, just getting a general perspective as to what the tree line looks like on that property, uh, looking outward. Uh, the properties on Meredith, they enjoy some existing trees on the residential property that buffers the two projects and those would remain in place as they're outside of the ownership. Um, a, a alternate view, just moving up line a little bit further, again showing the nature of the trees. Um, the houses on Meredith Lane are, you can see those in the background. Again, all of these photographs are taken directly on our property over the points of, uh, the, the floating balloons.
Chair, this, uh, to the chair, uh, this is all at approximately sixty feet based on, you understand the flying of the drone?
Yes, so the, the two distinctions, if it's an aerial photograph, which will be pretty distinct, um, those are with the drone, they're at approximately sixty to sixty-five feet to be just above the tree line. So as representative as we could make it to the roof line of the buildings without having the balloons in those locations, given the limitations.
What kind of control do we have in the accuracy of this drone?
Because earlier you said sixty-five to seventy.
We, so.
Sixty to sixty-five, I mean, we were looking for sixty-two.
Uh, uh, so the peak of the roof is sixty, uh, so sixty-two, whether it's in the minutes or not, I'm not gonna speak to it, but the, the architectural elevation has us at sixty. Um, the control on the drone is, is pretty reliable in terms of the GPS, but it's not perfect. Um, you know, it, that if you, uh, there's a, a video controller for anybody that flies drones, there's a video controller, you're actually looking at a screen, the screen looks incredibly still. But if you actually look at the drone, the drone is constantly compensating and trying to keep itself horizontal and level. So it will go up a foot, it will go down a foot, it will move a little left, it will move a little bit right, so there's, there's a little bit of tolerance that's in there in terms of that accuracy.
But you're talking about ten feet, now you're talking a foot.
No, I, I'm, so as the drone is floating and hovering, I'm talking about a, a tolerance of about a foot. What I indicated earlier is that at certain points for us to get above the tree line to fly the drone, we were at heights of about seventy feet.
Well, let me read from the minutes, I mean, I could give you it verbatim and it, and it's even more. But, uh, I said, I'm asking for a picture of projections, these buildings are sixty-two feet. Considering the mass, I don't think it would, expense would be great to put a balloon on either gable end so people can see what sixty-two feet is like. Mr. Calhoun said, we'd be happy to do the balloon test. And then the chair said, uh, it would be helpful to see what sixty-two feet at the ridge might be doing to someone along Meredith Drive. You did not do any of that. And I can tell you this, I mean, if you did this, if you.
I, I just wanna.
You said you were gonna give us the sixty-two feet and you did not.
I just wanna respond calmly, maybe I misheard, but Phil addressed that, I understand what you're saying, but correct me if I'm wrong, Phil addressed the impossibility. Of getting the actual balloon through the tree line. So I think what you're saying, I understand, we all wanted it, but that's what I understand Phil to have said. So I also would ask that we continue a good discussion, which tonight, which tonight has been great, it's a good discussion and I appreciate it. But let's please just not got, get accusatory, if I'm wrong about what.
Sorry.
Phil said, then he can correct me.
You said you were gonna do something and you didn't.
But he told you why, okay.
And I'm gonna tell you something, if I was there, I would have taken the balloon, I would have found a spot where I can get it up to the sixty-two feet and then I would have walked it over. It seems to me and it seems to everyone else in the room that you did not want to show us that and I can see why.
I'll let them, I'll let them respond, I'm just trying to keep things calm so that we don't have.
It's not up to you to change what this board asked for.
Excuse me, with all due respect to the chair, we had a, we don't have your minutes.
You were here, you said you would do it at sixty-two feet.
No, and what we did do in order to eliminate any confusion, we put together a detailed plan of exactly what we were going to do. We provided a letter that stated exactly what we were going to do and I'm glad, glad, I will certainly read it into the record. But what we said in that letter, the only items that we had to change and insert into it is the date and you asked for an additional time. And we did that, we increased the time, we could not get the balloons to that. We tried to float balloons at sixty feet back where the ridge were, but we did not make a commitment to provide that sixty foot in our plan. Sir, you can read the minutes, your minutes are not part of it, but if you read the plan that we provided to you.
We have, I think we're going back and forth between.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and my opinion was that we want to, I, I don't want to get into it, I think the question was asked and answered.
I do.
And again, I, I accept your being unhappy, I'm just saying that we've had a good discussion tonight. That, that's fine, but let.
It isn't fine.
No, when you said I'm not the only one.
What you were supposed to do.
You don't tend to let me finish my statement. We don't believe we changed it, it was no intentional subterfuge, you can disagree, that's okay, I just agree with, uh, Mr. Polymus.
Forty-two isn't sixty-two.
You can accuse all you want, Mr. Finneran.
That's what happened, sir, it's not an accusation, it's a fact.
But the point is, we are trying to have a good discussion tonight and we've had it. It, the back and forth doesn't matter, you disagree, you're upset, I accept that. I'm just saying that let's move on so we can try to continue a good discussion, there's no point to continue.
I don't see how you consider this a good discussion.
Do you want us to leave right now, Mr. Chairman, through you, shall we continue with other matters and conclude the hearing?
Are you gonna show these people what sixty-two feet looks like, as you said you were.
Asked and answered, through the chair, I would just like to continue with what we expect to continue.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, Mr. Chair, I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to weigh in. Folks really have to go through you, not your members. Counsel and the applicant and any representative of the applicant or anybody else. Can't be rushing up and interrupting a member, uh, so I, I would just like to respectfully.
Thank you, counsel.
Remind people that you run the meeting, Mr. Chair. But before people start yelling into the microphone or speaking into the microphone at all, they need to be recognized by the chair before they try to do that.
Thank you, counsel. The point's been made, I, I share Mr. Finneran's frustration, uh, I do recall specifically sixty-two feet was asked. The reason why has been offered by the applicant. I think, uh. Do you have any additional comments you'd like to make?
Uh, relative to the, the peak height, no, Mr. Chair, I think it's asked and answered. Um, I do have some additional photographs, just happy to walk through the rest of the slide deck and get to the end and then answer any questions the board has.
Very well, thank you.
Sure. Um, so we wanted also to make sure we had photographs along the residence, along seven, uh, along Meredith Drive. So again, very, very quickly, um, this is a view from seventy-eighth Meredith Drive. Go ahead, please. Uh, an, an alternating view where you can see both of the balloons floated around building three. Um, off the back of that property, again through that tree line at the rear of the site. Uh, and then as I'm moving across sort of left to right, this is the far right corner of building three. Uh, similar photographs, uh, for eighty-two Meredith and they're, they're obviously in the skyline, um, and then as I move across the site there at eighty-two. Uh, ninety, uh, just gives a general indication as to where that building line, again, top of soffit would fall relative to this particular property. Uh, and then the alternating side of ninety Meredith.
Can you go back to that last photo?
Certainly.
No, the one before that.
Which one?
That's forty feet.
Yes, it is. Forty-one and a half, through the chair, forty-one and a half, sir.
Yeah, now it seems to be by looking at that, that, uh, the top of that tree is less than sixty feet. So I failed to see how. Could not have gotten a balloon at that height. And all these spots, I still don't accept it.
Is it possible to have your drone go up with a tapered flag hanging beneath it just to demonstrate at a later date what sixty-two feet is, give or take a few feet?
Possibly to drop something down, the drone can't be at that height because there are trees and interferences, so the safety precautions won't allow them to exist within the tree line. But maybe something down, but I would caution Mr. Chair to think about, uh, as the member had already expressed concern over the tolerance of the drone itself. Uh, you know, whether you would consider that a reliable data point coming down, that if the drone is moving up and down a foot, plus or minus a few feet, wherever it happens to be, as to whether you'd consider that acceptable.
Mr. Chair. Jerry. I don't know if we're gonna go there, but my experience with other balloon tests, uh, the balloons have been a lot, lot bigger than the two to three feet and, and maybe it was for. Communication towers, I'm assuming. If we wanted to, is it possible to get that big of a balloon in there, you may need a crane, I'm not sure.
So through the chair, uh, there are opportunities for bigger balloons. But the opportunity for the bigger balloon still presents the opportunity for it to snag and pop on a branch. At, at any height throughout the process. Um, the only reliable way is to clear cut the area and ensure that the balloon. Um, the only reliable way is to clear cut the area and ensure that the balloon can move freely. And I don't think it was the intent of anybody, this board or the applicant, to go in and start clearing trees just to express that elevation. Um, so the short answer is yes, it could be done, but it still poses the same risks that it wants to move laterally, side to side if there's a slight wind, and if it encounters a sharp pointy object, it will deflate.
Other board questions?
Mr. Chair?
Tony?
I have to add on, uh, Mr. Cudaro, I think all of this discussion about tree height, uh, is very, very important, extremely important. But what it really emphasizes is the need for that buffer zone to be expanded and the health of the trees that remain. And why it's important to do that. So I just wanted to say, the height of the balloon's extremely important so that everyone sees it. But more important than that is the buffer zone that remains. Because we can see in some of these photographs here, it's very thin in places, but in other places, it's, 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 it's pretty heavy. So I just wanted to point out, I think it's important to consider that, the health of those trees that remain, where the foundations go so that they don't hurt the roots of trees. So that's all I wanted to say about that.
Point taken.
So just to finish off very quickly, uh, the, the photos may appear repetitive, but it's just to, um, show the board that we did document, um, across the entirety of their property, so here we are at one oh, one oh two, again, similar occurrences, of course. Uh, and then lastly, I think this is the final photographs at, at one twelve. I think that's it, Jack, yes. So, just to get through, um, and then obviously if there continue to be questions, happy to answer them.
Suzanne, anything else? Scott?
Uh, just to conclude, uh, I agree that the balloon test was difficult, somewhat flawed, but clearly to Tony's point, I think the key takeaway conclusion is, the larger the buffer, the more protection for the butters, and that, that's hopefully the outcome that we can get.
All right. Frank? Jerry?
I'm also.
Mark?
Well, I think I've said what's on my mind.
So going forward, Noreen, do we have a next date, correct, before we get into public comment, don't worry?
Yes, so our next proposed date would be March seventh.
The applicant's looking for forty-five minutes or so, does any one of the board, uh, have an issue, wants to come back with some proposed building placements and change to the overall plan? Does anyone have any strong opposition to the forty-five minutes request that?
To make it better?
Absolutely not.
Didn't anticipate any-
Mr. Chair?
Jerry?
I think we voted this down, but is a, I mean, there's a lot of information with work group meetings, if we have them. Possibility of meeting on a Saturday. I mean, literally, I mean, we've got probably hours of work ahead of us of taking in information, let alone deliberating. And I'm just putting it out there, I don't know if the other board members opposed to a Saturday, or the applicant would be opposed to a Saturday. Or more than a couple of meetings in a week, more than one meeting in a week.
Mark, you wanna weigh in?
I think that that may be a possibility, but at this juncture, I don't see that it's, should be considered.
I don't think we're there yet either.
Yeah, once it starts getting tight, and I mean, we really have meaty issues we wanna deal with, yeah, that absolutely may be the case. But it's still February, and we're, we haven't hit stride yet.
I think what'd be helpful too is just we could have some graphics that will show mass and height and so on, if you're gonna rework the plan. Uh, just so we can have a better understanding of the interaction relationship with the butters, uh, if you're coming back with reworked, uh, reworked plans. Uh, if we can incorporate the shadow study, uh, so on, other things we want to see?
I got one.
Mark?
If you're gonna come up with this new plan, um, I think it may, if indeed it's as you described it, and I still can't see where it was at all those locations, but to give us an accurate height, it may need, be necessary to take down one tree, uh, or whatever, but I, I still think that the height of this thing is something that needs to be appreciated by everyone, and we, we haven't, as of yet, received anything close to indicating that.
Mr.? It may not necessarily be possible along an exact or requested location on Meredith, is there a spot you could get a balloon up to sixty-two feet?
Mr.? There, there may be another way of doing this, rather than cutting a tree to get a balloon up there. I'll ask Mr. Cudaro, can't we, can't you create a scale plan where you show what you believe to be the height of the build, well, you know to be the height of the building, at grade, and show where the backs of these lots are in the houses, and have an angle like this, just showing the height, number one, the header of the window, forty-one and a half feet, but also the roof ridge, or the bathtub I think it's referred to. So that you have a scale plan, so you have this vertical height, grade level, and this angle here. So angle from forty-one and a half feet, angle from sixty-two feet, to where it hits the back of several of the houses. Can't we create a scale like that, which would be, in my opinion, not that the balloons are wrong, but in my opinion, be easier for all of us to see?
A 3D model.
A 3D model.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I think that would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, to clarify, are we talking about a 3D model like you, you see where architects will come in and have a 3D model? Are we just talking about, uh, a plain model? 3D or two dimensional?
I'm looking for graphics.
I, I, I guess I'm asking through you, to the applicant, uh, what they think is possible in a reasonable amount of time.
Uh, our preference would be, rather than doing more balloon work, is to come up with those details for you. I think, uh, we've already been looking at it, seeing how we could model it, uh, we've done it on other projects. Uh, so, you know, we would pull the grades that we have in the neighborhood and try to create a model. And, uh, I'd rather spend the resources on that than putting another balloon up that's gonna fail.
Mark?
How about a quality balloon like Mylar? I mean, I just refuse to accept that you couldn't get a balloon up to sixty feet, I'm sorry. You said you were gonna do it, and you didn't, these people would like to see.
Through the chair, with all due respect, we did what, exactly what we said we were going to do on the letter that we submitted to the board. The board provided the dates, we did it, it was not as successful as we had wished, but it accomplished what we were looking to find out, how strong the buffers are or are not, and that's what we wanna work on now.
I would just ask, uh, would be helpful for us to some graphics that we can see.
We will, we will.
Public comment, I'm gonna turn it up to public comment at this point, Ms. Zion.
Tommy Zein, thirty-sixth Captain, Bonenburg Lane. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members, we're requesting about three minutes tonight, thank you. According to the information I've read, I noticed inconsistencies with building height and the number of parking spaces, among many other things. Ten days ago, February fifth, twenty-twenty-four Beals and Thomas, an engineering firm, completed a peer review on Saxon's application for a comprehensive permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's a fifteen-page report, we know that, highlighting numerous inconsistencies within Saxon's application. Mr. Chairman and Board members, every detail matters. It's for these reasons, Saxon's inconsistencies, that this project stay in an open, public hearing with no working groups. Thank you. We want more transparency from Saxon Partners, and we want to be afforded the right to speak at every public meeting before the hundred and eighty days expire. I wanna make one more point tonight. My experience on the day of the balloon test. I was extremely cordial to Saxon's engineers, Phil, I allowed them access to my property. Dave Calhoun approached me while at the rear of my property. He criticized me for the pallets and wood behind my fence. I told him he was wrong, and then he tried to intimidate me. He stated he was going to notify the building inspector, and this would affect my run for select board. I remained polite and informed Mr. Calhoun, there's no violation, it's not his property, and the pallets and the construction debris were present behind my property when I purchased it. It's just another tacky diversion by Saxon Partners instead of sticking to the real facts. The Felmath Enterprise stopped by my home to watch the balloon test. Calhoun continued with his false rhetoric in front of the reporter. It was a great performance by him, but his facts are never accurate. It's unfortunate, because this day was supposed to be all about the balloon test. Dave Calhoun has shown a pattern, trying to intimidate me and other residents in our community, because we oppose this project.
Is this a personal attack?
Nope.
Okay.
You can continue, Mr. Zion.
I have another thirty seconds. Because we oppose this project, three seventy-five Sandwich Road, Road. The applicant's use of intimidating tactics towards the butters should never be tolerated, and it's all the more reason why we should have no working groups and keep this in public hearing, that's what I was getting at. My last comment is for the, thank you, my last comment is for Saxon Partners. Felmath is unwavering, when you come to Felmath, be prepared, because you're going to experience a fight. We're not going to slow down, thank you.
Good evening, Board, my name's Peter Cooper, one oh two Meredith Drive. And if he could probably bring the photograph back up again of one oh two Meredith Drive in my backyard, it'd be greatly appreciated. The other thing would be, this was a photograph that was taken inside my home, sitting in a recliner where I can watch television and see the birds, at the bird feeder. And if you'd look at it, there were some comments put in, that there was a tree there, and my wife circled it, and then we went and got it blown up, so that you could actually see a blue balloon that I'd broken three times at that particular point. You have a piece of wood there, and you're passing it along, that is, I counted my first time, seventy-one rings. That tree is as old as I am, I recounted it again, it's somewhere in the age of sixty to sixty-five years old. But nevertheless, it's a three-inch D H, D V H piece of wood that if you're gonna take trees down, and you look in my backyard, you can be sure those trees are well over a hundred years old. And you're gonna allow it to be destroyed, because when they go in to do buildings, they usually do clear cut. They don't take and look, oh, we're gonna leave this one. It's straight, because it's a lot easier for a corporation to just clear cut everything, and it's cheaper for them to buy for seventy-five dollars a maple, you stick it in the ground, and it dies within ten years. And according to what I believe forty B, and I cannot find the paper, but they have to put it so it's visually not seen by neighbors, correct? We know, sir, am I right or am I wrong? You're the attorney, you have to run up here every time to make sure you cover as real as-
Mr. Cooper.
Yes, sir.
Just direct it to me, please, thank you.
Very good, sir, but as you can all see, the paperwork with the blown up balloon while I'm sitting in my house. So where is my privacy? Also, I went up into my daughter's room, my daughter's room, and I was able to see level with the balloon. Where is your privacy again? I'm sure, quite sure the ladies would not like to have that, they have to close their curtains every time they go into their room. There's your privacy, very good, sir, thank you very much, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Oh, that's for me. Hi there.
Good evening, sir, would you just look at that for yourself for the record?
My name's Bill Scully, I live forty-five Green Acres Road.
Thank you.
Seems to me, this is all magical thinking, with the mindset of my own mission. Forty-foot balloon heights versus sixty feet shows you why they don't have, you know, that shadow study done. Think of seven foot, seven full, eight-foot sheets of plywood, plus a six-foot sheet of plywood, all stacked on top of each other, there's your height. Think of it. It's not even close to this, blows by that. Now we know why there's no state study, not to mention the river this project will make running through Meredith Drive. It'll be a straight river running right through Meredith Drive. Thank you.
We got you next.
Recovering from shoveling. Tanya Lewandowski, three sixty-three Sandwich Road. Uh, thank you for hearing me. I only have a couple of comments about the balloon, uh, situation, um, because as a scientist, it's, it, it hurts me a lot. Um, I think there is science, uh, behind there, you can, uh, look at a lot of forestry groups that use, uh, drones to do different type of heights, uh, analyses, and that would actually give you a better shadowing, um, type of, um, research in, in 3D using some CAD, um, designs if you so preferred. But, uh, the balloon is obviously a great thing for all of us to actually see, that gives you some sort of a, of a visual when you are actually on a butter. Um, however, there is science back there, trust me. Um, even if you don't have things hanging from your drones, there are lights, and that would give all of the local, um, myself included, um, folks to be able to see where, um, that height really actually is. I don't care if it's off by a foot, I care if it's off by twenty, which this project is. So, moving on from that, uh, I also had some comments in regard to the traffic studies. Um, I'm very concerned about the road, beautiful that we have that picture up there. Um, we were talking about light and sound pollution, putting a couple of quote-unquote native species, they are not, that's actually listed there for our, uh, specific area, um, and we need something that's not a deciduous type of plant. We need something that's also, um, you know, a hardscape that would stop some of the sound, sound drops. And if you want to actually change, there's actually a dig in that road right now, because there was, um, there was a wetland that was identified there. I'm sure you can find that in your paperwork, sir. Um, so, those are the things that are kind of concerning about the lights. I mean, you're looking at thousands of vehicles coming in, coming out, the sound, the dropping of that, of course, we have the, the storm, uh, drain issues too. So those are really concerns of, and the dangers of adding all of these types of, um, additional traffics onto Sandwich Road are all of us, you know, that have lived there for decades, um, are, are a huge concern. So just wanted to kind of throw that out there too. Um, and looking at the annual differences, again, don't give me a couple of grass plants and a deciduous tree that's, is supposed to, to mitigate all of those type of things. Um, and as was mentioned today, we didn't even mention about all of the Amazon and, you know, different delivery vehicles and so forth. Uh, and where they wanna put the bus stops right on the edge of the road, and all of the, the parents that are trying to take care of their, their, um, children, that's even a more dangerous area, so that even concerns me more, why wouldn't it be more internalized? Um, I do appreciate the idea of, um, kind of, if you had to build something there at all, as a wildlife person, I don't think anything should be there, but I do believe, um, you know, I, I understand the need for, for that type of a development, and I think it should really, um, have some sort of a wildlife buffer. If you have something that's- If you have something that's built like in that picture there, it would, it would not assist the east-west passage that we've been talking about, especially also looking at some of the Coonamassat Rivers and the ponds further south and the ocean waters that would be affected by the nitrogen load. And we keep talking about a new type of septic process. Is that a tertiary process? Is that, or is that just we're putting larger, you know, effluent grounds out there and hoping that it dissipates until it actually gets into, through the sandy waters, until it gets into the riverine areas and of course eventually all of the ocean spaces. So those are things that are concerning me. I know that MIBA and NEPA, I work with those groups or those legal statutes on a semi-regular basis. So I think they will actually be enacted hopefully with this type of a project because the scale really isn't been identified. And I understand as a businessperson why it wouldn't be. However, as a resident and as a biologist, I don't prefer that type of perspective. So I'm very concerned about not being transparent as to the size and scale because even that scale, again, we had 25 homes there, not even 10 years ago, that were stopped because of the concern of the nitrogen loads and traffics and so forth. And when we're doing this 10-fold or 100-fold more, that really is very concerning to me. So, and when we talk about self-monitoring, what is that? I mean, you know, that's crazy to me. I mean, I appreciate that data is being given, but to be self-monitored, no. You know, then I'm always going to be driving 55, right? So that just doesn't make sense to me as a normal person. So I hope that there's some sort of checks and balances that would make, and I'm hearing a lot of things that want to happen, but I don't hear the perpetuity that I would like to hear. That would make me feel better, that it's not just going to happen until something's sold. So that the town doesn't have to actually mitigate and pay and all of us taxpayers have to pay and take care of all of these issues that are without doubt going to occur. Thank you.
May I request additional time, please? I think maybe.
How much time do you need?
Maybe four minutes, I think.
Sure.
I'm not sure. My name is Wendy Bissler. I am the president of the Coonamassat River Trust. I actually live right here across the street on Lake View Ave. The Coonamassat River Trust has a great deal of problems. We have a lot of concerns about this project. Our mission is to promote and preserve the natural heritage and ecological interrogatory of the Coonamassat River and the surrounding lands. The trust engages in scientific, educational, and recreational activities focused on the Coonamassat River. So we're concerned about the impact of the 300 unit easterly. We're worried that the development could cause serious environmental degradation to the Coonamassat River and its downstream estuary Great Pond. Additionally, the development would impact important open spaces, land adjacent to the Coonamassat, sensitive riparian habitats. These parcels are buffers to the river and very likely serve as wildlife corridors linking upland species to the water habitat. Significant resources of time and money have been spent in making this area a jewel of the town. Nearly 8.5 million in grants from federal, state, and local monies have funded the restoration of the Coonamassat River. This tally does not include the in-kind contributions by Falmouth Town Departments, nor the many, many volunteer hours. Over 50 partners of government agencies, nonprofits, scientific institutions, and schools have contributed to the success of the river's restoration. The restoration is contributing to the return of owl wives, blueback herring, American eels, white perch, and brook trout to the river. Over 180 species of native plants have returned to the area, providing food and shelter for birds and animals. The Coonamassat Greenway Heritage Trail is hugely popular walking path and over 1,500 Falmouth and Cape Cod students have participated in our Adopt a Herring program and our very popular school field trips. Currently, and every Falmouth fourth and fifth grade grader now visits the river to learn about the value of restoring the river for fish and other animals. So one of our overall concerns is we still don't understand why the entire development is squeezed onto the eastern half of the parcel. This is the section with the greatest habitat value. We still have not heard a compelling reason why it's only on the eastern half of that parcel. That is the parcel that has relatively untouched forested areas. Its existing older growth forests can remain, it's got existing older growth forests. I don't understand why can't they flip it? Why can't their development go to the western part, preserve the relatively untouched old growth forests on the eastern part and preserve that if you want to preserve it for development later down the road? That would give the area at least a little bit more time to act as a valuable carbon sink and also helping to maintain groundwater quality and allow for natural infiltration. Plus, that might also help preserve any kind of wildlife corridor there might be between those upland areas and the river itself. We're also concerned about any septic effluent from the project could negative impact the already impaired Great Pond estuary plus the river itself. The town spent $20 million for the Little Pond Sewer Project, which also removed 1,000 kilograms per year of nitrogen from Great Pond. The project could potentially wipe out that gain according to calculations by Superintendent Amy Lowell by adding back in 714 kilograms per year. That's her calculations. This is over two-thirds of the amount that we just removed by putting in the Little Pond project. I understand that Mr. Calhoun argues that the numbers would be lower, but no matter what, there should be no net increase of nitrogen from this project into Great Pond. We also, we also wonder if, and the Cape Cod Commission had suggested that there should be a natural resource inventory done on this parcel. I don't know if that has occurred. It would help to identify and presence and location of most valuable wildlife and plants that might be on the site. It could serve as a guide for the layout of the development and try to protect sensitive areas. Additionally, we're also concerned about any tree clearing for the development. Cape Cod Commission also mentioned having a tree, a tree clearing map or mapped and identified so you know how many trees are coming down and identify which ones. And finally, you know, it would be great if some pervious pavers were incorporated into the development to allow groundwater to be recharged, at least some pervious pavers, maybe in the parking, walking areas. This would help increase natural infiltration. Plus, it would be really great if the landscaping could incorporate native drought-tolerant plants to limit the amount of irrigation that's needed and that the use of pesticides be avoided to protect wildlife and groundwater quality. We hope that the Coonamassat River is a jewel in Falmouth and has a long historical and cultural significance in the town. The plans are finally moving forward to clean up Great Pond. Please do not allow these important natural resources in Falmouth to be degraded by this project. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Craig. I live at 45 Striper Lane in East Falmouth. Been in town about 25 years. I have two concerns. First is the water quality. So I'd ask to ask that the board understand the difference in the now situation and the planned situation regarding nitrogen. I believe the developer said three grams per liter was the standard they would have built to and four liters to a gallon. Is that accurate?
Milligrams.
Milligrams. Okay, milligrams, thank you. 12 milligrams to the gallon therefore. Sorry. Well, I'm going liters to gallons. It was milligrams per liter, three, four liters per gallon.
Close enough.
12 per gallon. Close? And I believe the capacity is 50,000 gallons a day. Is that accurate?
Yes.
That's what the developer stated their capacity was.
Mr. Chairman, what's the capacity of what?
The wastewater.
Wastewater plant.
Oh, the wastewater, okay, that was superintendent's estimate.
This is public comment, it's not question, so don't read answers.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm accurate here. I believe the math is, it'd be 12 milligrams per gallon times 50,000 gallons is 600,000 milligrams a day. I believe that's accurate. What's the now situation? How much does that land put into the Coonamassat River now? That's what I'd like to know. That'd be before and after. Is it 300,000 today and goes to six? Or is it a much smaller number going to 600? I'd like to know that. Second question or concern of mine is traffic. I believe the developers proposing 1.5 parking spaces per unit, 300 units, 450 cars, and the national statistic is 1.75 car trips per day in and out of a house. Two cars average 1.75. I believe the math is 675 additional cars coming down Sandwich Road heading into town. I'd like to understand the impact of that. The traffic light at Brook Hill, what happens now? Okay? Those are my concerns. I hope you address them. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Erica Edwards, 52, Blair Lane. Not at all near here, but lived here my whole life and I think 180 species of plants count and that's not even the animals. I know that we've heard from a lot of scientists about the importance of this corridor and the wetlands. So I was wondering where that placed the zoning of this under Article 8 for the Falmouth zoning in special use district areas of critical environment concern because that would induce a lot of restrictions on what they're planning and that would, I assume, need a lot more waivers. So I was just wondering where this landed in that, and if it's not an area of critical environmental concern, I think it should be considered such. My other thought is, in terms of the balloon test, I feel that the only photo that truly showed anything at all was the very first one where we were staring directly into somebody's yard, which was, I think, the best photo to show. If I'm staring through a bunch of trees at a balloon and I can't envision that really being a giant massive block of building instead of a blue sky in the back, I think the important thing is just staring into somebody's private space for their entire lives from that point on, which sounds pretty sad to me for them. Right? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Good evening. I hate this when I don't plan to talk and I get up and talk. My name is Virginia Rabisa, 502 Sandwich Road. And just a little bit of history about me and my family. I own a piece of property on Sandwich Road 502 that was purchased by my grandfather approximately 75 years ago. My father owned it and I own it now. It was almost four acres of land and I chose to offer to my butters some of my land to protect them from future development like this. But the reason I'm, I get more questions as I hear different things and one thing, I went to the GIS map at the town to figure out what this property was, who the butters were. And personally, I don't see flipping it to the front is going to make that big a difference because now you just affect a new set of butters. So, you know, it would be nice to stretch it out and whatnot. But now I'm feeling like really the developer is the tail wagging the Falmouth dog because we're not getting, we're not getting, you know, straight answers and I understand it's the real estate market, but I'm thinking, okay, they based their traffic study on, oh, we could have a nursery here or, you know, the low end, but we have no idea what's going to be on that extra piece of property. So the traffic study is based on what's proposed and now we're kind of screwed because anything beyond that could be 100 times more traffic than what their, you know, their study showed. So that's, you know, that's one thing. The other thing, discussion about, you know, oh, we may work with the town on the sand pit for wastewater or whatnot. What, now they have that in their hand. What's that going to cost us? Are they going to say, well, you can buy it for a million one because that's what we paid for the land or whatever? And the other thing is, if an environmental group said, well, we'd like to buy that open space, what's their price tag now going to be? Because they're holding the town. They're wagging the town. So those are the, those are the other kind of things that concern me. The other thing I wondered about, my understanding of Saxon, the way they build, is that they sell the development to an investor. How much do we control, will our, do we have contracts or understandings that will tie over to an investor? Can we move those, you know, conditions over to an investor? Will they monitor it the same way that Saxon says they will? So that's another concern. And as far as the balloon, I tried to go to the balloon exhibit and I drove around all the different properties and I couldn't even see it. Then I found out it was kind of a disaster. But like the young lady just said, you have to remember, that's not just a balloon, that's going to be a solid wall. And so I really feel bad for, this, the only thing that'll affect me directly is traffic. I really feel bad for these people and I feel they really need to have support. Thank you.
Betsy Gladfelter. I'm not going to talk anything about the Coonamassat. I have, because I already have and I thought, I think Wendy did a great job. But there are three things that I want to point out. First of all, I like Mark's plan. I'd like to kind of reduce the density of this project on the land. Anybody who watches CONCOM knows that I like trees and I always make sure that they're replaced when they're taken down. I also want to point out, and a couple of people have already done this, I live in West Falmouth and I'm concerned about this project too. And I was disappointed that there wasn't a 62-foot balloon somewhere to see. But I also know both from conservation and seeing historical commission and probably you guys, there are lots of ways to show what the mass of these buildings are and we're not seeing any of them. And there's, you know, you can do it in CAD, you can build three, those of you who have been out to the river have seen the overlook. That landscape architect built a model for us for that overlook that we presented to the select board. So, and I, and I had a friend in graduate school who actually didn't finish his degree because he was very successful at building architectural models. So it's possible to do that. So these are massive buildings and at the very least, these buildings could be compared to some of the other massive buildings we already have in town. We think they're massive in town, but they're small compared to what these buildings are going to look like. So I'd like a real clear, I mean, I'm requesting you to request a very clear demonstration. There are various ways to do it. But, and frankly, I am a scientist and I was a little, any field scientist knows, when you first go out, it's probably not going to work exactly how you thought. But I would think people who built these kinds of developments, who have done balloon tests in the past, would have had some experience. And if this is what would happen, I would think they would go out again and figure out a way to demonstrate it. So my main point tonight is to say, I really think it's important for all of us in town and even though it's mostly people who are here, who are neighbors, I certainly understand their concern, but there are lots of other people in town who are concerned about this. their concern, but there are lots of other people in town who are concerned about this project. So I'd like to see a clear demonstration of what the mass of this project is for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Can I comment on what she said?
Get through public comment. You're number two, sir. Lydia was first. Yes. Thank you.
This makes me nervous.
Don't be nervous.
Okay, looking at this map, the supposed road that's supposedly going in there is going to go right behind my house, my neighbor's house, their house. So basically, our property is going to sit between Pitch Pine Lane and their road. Is that going to be fair to us? No. Having a road put in behind us? I don't think so. The whole thing is ludicrous. Don't approach it.
Ma'am? That was a little, we just need your name for the record.
Nancy Perry.
Nancy Perry, thank you.
Hello, Kevin Heffron, one twenty-seven Meredith Drive. We've talked early about type of building that would be. The closest thing we have in Falmouth, of course, is Falmouth Hospital. Essentially, that's the size structure they're going to construct there, and we all know how Falmouth Hospital would fit into a residential area that's wooded presently. Also, MEPA is a requirement, because this will be more than ten acres of impervious surface. The five buildings themselves constitute nine point two-six acres. The half-mile road in will be another one point five acres, and that does not include sidewalks and the garages. So MEPA is automatically triggered, because this is over ten acres of impervious surface that's being created. This is also nitrogen-sensitive area, and the great presentation is talking about Coonamessit River, Great Pond, Little Pond, these can be impacted dramatically by the increase in nitrogen. The balloon test was a bust. We know that. We've been promised we're going to have a wastewater treatment system planned, and it's going to be presented to us. You've had a lot of promises made to you, nothing has been delivered. We know that once this goes through, it will be sold to developers. They will no longer have any interest, Saxon, in maintaining a relationship with Falmouth. We also know that you have suggested moving this further to the road, and they have no intentions of moving that boundary, because they plan on stage two and stage three. And that was the original plan. They are business people, they're looking for maximum profit, and they know that. And they're trying to play Falmouth and play this board, and you know that, too. So what are we going to do? Right? And I know you've tried having the state take action, that we have a safe harbor. We need to continue these efforts, and we, this is our own agricultural land, we know what we have to do, right? You can't give in to developers, to big city developers, trying to change what Falmouth is. This will have a dramatic impact, long-term, long-range, nitrogen, the environment, populations, roads, it's a travesty. Thank you.
Cheryl O'Hair from three seventy-one Sandwich Road. I have like too many things to say that I can't even start, but I want to remember to say just certain things quickly. I believe that I learned that it is within your right at the ZBA to require, or to request, or put a condition that seventy percent of the affordable units be designated specifically for Falmouth residents. And if that is true, please do so. Paul should be able to answer that, right?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly can answer that. So, the way the process works, Board is allowed to include a condition that would allow up to seventy percent of the units to be restricted, not necessarily restricted, but the first chance at those units in the lottery would be for Falmouth residents. That is subject to the approval of the subsidizing agency. The way the process works, because it's a fair housing question, the subsidizing agency has the right to say whether or not the town can impose that local restriction. They're, they work with the town, they're going to gather information from the town to support the need for that local restriction, but it is something that can be placed into a decision as a condition.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The other thing is, I want you to know there's wildlife on that property. He keeps saying there's not. There is. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Sylvia, thirty-nine Pitch Pine Lane. And with all the environment and all this stuff that's a lot more important, I just had a question, a couple of small questions. When you build a building that high, and it blocks your solar, that, you know, I have a loan on my solar, and it's going to be impacted probably with shadows, so would there be any kind of clause you get compensated for when somebody blocks your solar? That would be one thing that's upsetting me as far as financially, because it's quite a solar system, it's, it's, it's large. Also, when they go to dig the pro, the project, is all the dirt and debris going to fill the sand pit so that if they do build in the future, or when they build in the future, they have to fill that pit? And maybe they should keep it kind of shallow, so if they build another humongous building, that maybe it won't stand so tall, because it would be built in a hole? Like, that might work in their benefit? Just saying. I feel like what the other person said, that they talked about the three different phases, and I'm going to be hit on both sides, because I'm on a corner lot on a hill, and so I look at the pit on one side, and then the other side, I think I heard was like a fifty-foot buffer, but I don't know if I'm going to be impacted on the first phase or not, because I don't quite understand the map. But pretty much, if people have solar, and you try to, you know, do renewable energy and all those efforts, unless you lease it, if you do buy one, it's quite expensive, you don't get a return for at least ten years. So I didn't know if I threw my money out the window not planning on a, you know, sixty-foot build, tall building next to my solar. So, that's it.
Any other public comments? So, Noreen, next meeting, I believe, is going to be March seventh, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. It will be here at the school. In terms of agenda items, developers requesting forty-five minutes, I think the Board is anxious to hear what's going to be presented. What else do we need, or you're suggesting we request that second meeting? The next meeting? Other than graphics and shadow study?
So I think the architect is going to attend and discuss the shadowing. The developer has represented that they may be presenting a shift in the buildings, which may impact the shadowing or not. I think we're also going to discuss, maybe to look in depth at the floor plans, we haven't really looked at the details within the building.
In the modeling.
Yes, in the modeling. That should probably get us through a few hours. Any other specific items the Board wants to take up at the next meeting? Jerry? Frank? Yes, Mr. Calhoun.
I believe both traffic engineers have worked through all the issues, and do you want to have them back so that they can both formally close their reports? Or is it okay to do it in writing?
I refer to our counsel, you going to have sufficient time to, or?
I would have it on another night.
Yeah.
You have a lot on for that. And on your agenda, did you include about the reply to the Beals and Thomas report? Those issues, there are a number of outstanding issues identified in the report, multitude of issues, both for the on-site, septic, stormwater, you know, you still have unresolved issues?
Yes, I would agree.
With regard to that, so to keep continuity, I, you know, I would recommend having the follow-up discussion on that at the next meeting.
No, I think it's prudent.
I, you know, I think it would benefit everyone to, not to belabor the meeting, but maybe to try to get some understanding of what type of renderings you are going to get that show, you know, the impact on the neighborhood, whether that be through CAD, modeling, whatever it is, it would be nice to hear from the consultant what you're anticipating, so that, you know, you can start to resolve those issues.
I agree.
Yeah, I just learned a couple members of our team will not be available on the seventh. Is there any chance we could push it to another date, so we can get you a section in the details?
We're on a pretty strict timeline here.
You are?
Yes.
You've also made some requests and some stuff that we're going to scramble to put together, but I would like to have the professionals here to walk you through it.
What are we looking at, Noreen, is the meeting after the March seventh meeting?
So the meeting after March seventh would be the twenty-first.
It's two weeks to lose.
Yeah.
Right, I agree. What could we do on the seventh, so we don't lose the time? What we could do is, we could have the traffic engineers here, they could close out that. We could address the shadow study if you want, but there really isn't much to the shadow study at this point. I think if most people went online and looked at what's been posted for over forty days on the website, it does not impact most of the abutters, except for possibly one in a short period of time that that's impacted. So, you know, if you'd like.
Isn't it going to change with your new proposal?
It will get less.
So I think it's not going to be helpful to have the traffic, or certainly the peer traffic come back until the details of the development are resolved, because if the buildings are moved, or there's some sort of impact to traffic, that may alter their opinion?
We're not changing the count, we're not moving, we're staying within the boundaries that we already have, so we're not moving things, we're trying to stay in the same piece. The only thing that may happen is, and this could be at a later date, is we're still working on the road to straight out the road. So, the plan that we're planning on bringing to you at the next meeting would be our modification of the buffers, taking the garages out, bringing the buildings closer together. We may be moving, shifting some of the buildings around. And then the other thing that you really want to see is some sections through the development and some modeling, and that's just going to take a little bit of time, so to have it on the seventh would be tight. I'd rather have a more productive and complete meeting on the twenty-first, if that's possible.
I mean, this is just a respectful suggestion, it's not contentious. I wonder if the applicant might consider, you know, an interim, short extension of the public hearing deadline to accommodate that, you know, to move from the seventh to the twenty-first makes more sense for the applicant, and it protects you, it just gives you the extra two weeks on the other end for the public hearing deadline. That would be helpful, I think, to that request, it's just a suggestion.
Mr. Calhoun?
I can't make that commitment to it. Wow, wow, wow.
Do you have a question, sir?
Are you, are you going, if you're going to bring in a traffic person, are you going to address Sandwich Road in twenty-eight?
The extra study areas that the two parties reviewed, your peer reviewer and ours, I believe they've reached conclusions on all items that were asked to be looked at.
I didn't see anything on twenty-eight in Sandwich Road. From your.
The two professionals are supposedly in agreement on what, and have looked, I don't know if they've looked at that specific one, but if it was on the list, they looked at it.
Then what do you want to talk about traffic next?
It's basically more of a formal closeout of the item. If you don't want to do it, you don't have to do it, that's fine.
No, I wanted to address, our peer review person for traffic said that intersection needs to be addressed.
I don't believe what, that is what Viness recommended. What Viness recommended is the possibility of looking at the delays at that. It's be, it's really beyond the scope of what we're required to look at, but we agreed we'd look at it, so we are.
Tony?
I'd like to understand from Mr. Calhoun why he will not commit to giving us an extension. I think it's reasonable, I think we're about to hear why, but I think it's reasonable to do so.
Anybody who deals with me knows that I really try to be objective and reasonable. It's still approximately three months away. If we need more time, it'll certainly be considered seriously and in good faith, but it is just not necessary to do it at this point. And we're only talking about two weeks, it's just a scheduling thing, so saying no now is just appropriate under the circumstances. It's not indication, indicating what's going to happen down the road if there's good progress on things and an extension is needed at that point, that's all. It's what I do with all of my hearings. That's simple, that's all it is.
Well, Maker, I am concerned.
The question is on the spot. You're asking me to ask, answer a question on the spot. I told you I cannot answer that tonight. I can get back to you, I can talk to our team, but I can't give it to you on the spot.
Mr. Chair, and I, Mr. Chair?
Tony?
I've asked, he said, he's now said that he would get back to us. I'm just looking for the rationale beyond the fact that it's three months left to go. We have a lot to cover here, and I suspect we're going to have a lot more to cover that's complex, and we're going to need that time. I would ask, request Mr. Calhoun to consider and get back to our zoning administrator with exactly what he will do. I would like to see a commitment from you for some kind of extension now, not three months from now, not two months from now.
We'll certainly consider it and get back to Noreen. Get back to Noreen, thank you.
And it does say on the traffic review, through you, twenty-eight in Sandwich.
Well, I don't remember the details, so I'm in no way saying, yeah, you know, but our point is, we do want both of, both our traffic expert and yours to meet and to resolve things, and if somehow we haven't done that yet, there's still time to do that, I believe. But anyway, they're, they're in touch with each other, so, you know, it'll all be addressed, and it's just unfortunate scheduling-wise, but actually, a little more time makes sense to accomplish what we talked about tonight, so, and scheduling is always difficult, but be it the fourteenth or the twenty-first, you know, that seems to work. Twenty-first, I think, is what was suggested by the, by Noreen.
What's the appetite of the Board? I mean, I know personally, I would rather keep moving forward with meaningful hearings, but I'd also like to propose a few dates going forward to make sure that anyone in your team is going to be available, so we're not going to run into the situation again.
They can't show up on the seventh. Seems to be there all the time.
I guess want to clarify. I guess, want to clarify, would you be prepared to show us the new concept with your 45-minute presentation on the 7th? We would be able to do that, but we would not have our complete team here. We will not have our civil engineers here. It would have to be done by our architect. I mean, I still find that value. If you want to do that on the 7th, I mean, it's a lot to put together in that short period of time, but we're willing to try. But, you know, a more reasonable date of the 14th to the 21st is what we've requested. The board did ask us when it was time to open up the hearing for an extension, and we granted it to you.
Right, but you folks also took those two weeks off the end.
We didn't take it off.
They said we consider it.
We consider it.
It was taken off the total time.
Yes.
We also have the issue of scheduling this particular venue, which is problematic from time to time. I believe the 14th, there was, there's a school play here, so the auditorium is not available. Concern, of course, would be having us at Town Hall with a number of butters who've historically shown up and not being able to accommodate them, which would be problematic with an open meeting issue. So, we'll get back to it.
I mean, on the extension, we'll get back. On the date, look, it's always difficult. I mean, I think the 21st makes sense to make it as beneficial and useful as possible, as opposed to bits and parts on the 7th. I mean, if you absolutely insisted on the 7th, we'd do it, but as Dave said, can't guarantee how much is there. But more importantly, you know, the main person putting together the site changes is Phil, and he can't be there that night. That's all. It happens. That's all.
So what's the board's appetite about getting the architecture, architect here to give us some information on building placement?
We have a time constraint that's very tight.
Tony?
I need to better understand. Attorney Pucci brought up a very good point. What are we gonna act, what are we going to get for a model? Are we just gonna get a flat-line graphic? Are we gonna get a model? Because that's, one's gonna take more time than the other. So I'd like to have a definition to know what's actually gonna come back to us and be presented with regard to this model that we're supposed to get.
Phil, would you mind speaking to what you typically prepare? We don't have an image of it. No.
Through the chair to address the question. I believe what I heard is you wanted, the board would prefer sections through the site. So what we would need to do in order to prepare that is obviously modify the site, as Dave has indicated tonight. We have to make sure we have everything accounted for in terms of the general elevations, and then we'll cut those sections through relative to the building heights via butters that you asked us to do. So we were not endeavoring to do a 3D model for the board. We would look at doing some sections, and then we might be able to create some superimposition of buildings on some of the photographs that we obtained during the balloon visits, but I can't commit to that yet until we start seeing how the site lays out and then the time.
Mr. Chair, would you explain what you mean by sections?
I can. So several members of, I think, the board and the public tonight had referenced CAD. CAD is the computer aided drafting system. So we would essentially take, I don't know if you could put the site plan up real quick, Jack. Let me have him put this up, and I'll see if I can explain it a little more clearly.
I'm just gonna interrupt you for a second, please, on a point of order. It's past 9:30. We need a vote to continue the business of the board.
No, it's 8:30.
I'm not reading these... My apologies. I looked up and said, wow, time was flying this evening.
It caught me too, Mr. Chair. I go, how long was I talking? Thank you, thank you. What we would do is taking, using the site plan, we would create a section line from the homes through the site at various intervals along here. And that section ultimately would come back true to scale, true to grade, the grade of the homes here, the grade of the potential site development, so you can see the relativity between those two. And then the angle points that were referenced from the roof line and obviously the various stories of the building down to the nearest visual point of the butter along that same line. That's what would be included. That's what I heard. I guess I'm seeking clarification that that's what the board would look for.
I'm, I'm, yeah. I'm seeking clarification for myself and the board as to what you're capable providing. You're not gonna do a 3D model. You're gonna do sections through. I want, I, we need to see, we need to demonstrate what those buildings will be doing. It's a massive building. It's gonna be a gigantic wall across there. How the folks that are on these streets will see it from their backyard. The gentleman over there in the white hair gave us a picture of what he's seeing from his family room. All I'm asking is that that be depicted appropriately. Because if it doesn't do that, do we send you back to do something else? So please be as careful and as clear as you can in this matter.
Message received. Let's take a look at what we can do to answer those questions more clearly.
This is the board. Mark.
What's going on there?
There we go.
These buildings are gonna be moved, obviously, in the new plan. Does not, not get away from the larger old growth trees. And sorry to harp on it, but wouldn't it be possible to have a balloon test there? And then, and something that Betsy said sparked my curiosity. And shame on me. I only read half your letter, 'cause I saw that you addressed the time period, giving them the people in the neighborhood four hours. I didn't read to the bottom with the 41-foot part. But it kinda strikes me that peculiar that you knew that a 60-foot balloon wasn't gonna work before you even tried it. And I'm skeptical, and so is everyone else. I mean, I honestly think I could go to a dollar store and get about three balloons for a buck fifty each and do it. It just seems you don't wanna provide it. You said you would, and you haven't.
I'd like to get back on point about our next meeting.
Mr. Chair, can I just make a suggestion? And I don't know if it's the next meeting or the meeting after that. We could possibly have a meeting in Town Hall with the overflow in the water department downstairs with a live feed. So it would be an open meeting, and then people could come up and ask questions. That might be more up to Noreen if we can get the space in Town Hall.
Well, there were 70 people here tonight. How does that translate into Town Hall?
So I think the board first needs to decide when you wanna meet next, and then we'll pick a venue.
7, 7, 7.
7, 4.
Frank, I'd like to, I don't wanna lose the 7th, so we gotta get something accomplished.
Yep.
I agree with Frank.
At the minimum, I would like to see what the plans, the repositioned buildings are gonna look like. I understand we may not have, we're not necessarily gonna have 3D renderings at that point, but I think at least seeing two-dimensional suggestions would be helpful. And from there, I would suggest there's probably gonna be a lot of follow-up with that, about wanting to see how it's gonna affect other things, so.
The architect should be able to help with perspectives as well.
Yeah, absolutely. As well as some discussion about possibly the road being relocated. Realize it's not necessarily going to be engineering standards, but broad strokes would be helpful, so. Is that something we can get done on the 7th?
We'll bring a conceptual plan to the 7th, and we'll walk through it.
Other things that you'd like to address? I don't think we're ready to close out our traffic at this point. Other things that the board might wanna see, or that the applicant might wanna bring to us that evening?
I think that's a critical path.
No, it's a significant change, so I think that will be the, I guess, the primary point of discussion on the 7th then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to continue to March 7th at 6:00 P.M.
At this location?
At the Lawrence.
At Lawrence, cool.
Is there a second?
Second.
Give that to Mr. Peterson. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. This hearing will be continued till 6:00 P.M. on March 7th. I'm sorry, what? Yes, Mr. Peterson, yes. We have no hearings on tonight's agenda. Next up, we have open meeting issues. We have minutes from January 4th, January 18th, January 25th, and the executive session of February 1st. Has everyone had opportunity to review those minutes? We're tabling, yeah, yes.
Just not the regular minutes for February 1. I mean, yeah, so we're doing January 4th, 18th, and 25th.
And the executive session of 2:1. Any discussion on the minutes? Any adjustments or corrections?
Not near.
Is there a motion to approve? Yeah, that's a, is there a second on the motion? That's a Scott. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Those minutes are approved. Number two, discussion relating to town council with a vote anticipated.
Mr. Chair?
People to either move out, it's getting noisy.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I could just ask if people could take their conversations outside, we are still in session. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Fineran?
I've requested this be on the agenda. I think it's been not a smooth path as far as council. I mean, we started late. I mean, we had outside council, but it seems that it was interpreted that once we had outside council, we did not want help from town council. And that's the furthest thing from my intention. I have found that working with town council has made me much better at this position. I think sometimes there are just simple questions that I can ask of town council that need not go through Mr. Pucci. I think that town council acting as a filter or whatever, I just, I benefit from town council, and I think them being absent isn't doing us any favors. I think we need all the arrows in the quiver that we can get. And it's quite simply that simple.
Is this, is there a request you're making, or?
Absolutely.
So I know that town council is present. I don't know, Steve, if you wanna weigh in on this, or what your position is evening. I'm happy to go through some of the history of this issue, or if you would like to address it.
I would like town council to be here. I've found that he helps me very much, Brian. I mean, since we've been allowed to speak with town council, Brian has been immensely helpful. I also know from being in selectmen's meetings for the last 20 years that not being in the room and watching it at home, as good as it is, it's not the same. And I would like town council to be here simply for my assistance.
For you.
Myself personally, and I know that other members of the board have used town council and found him to be quite helpful. And...
Mr. Chair? Excuse me. Through you, Mr. Chair. Are we into the discussion phase since the motion hasn't been seconded? Not that I don't wanna hear from...
What?
Town council, but if we have a motion on the, it should be seconded so we can discuss it. If it's no, if it's not gonna be seconded, it would go on as usual with town council appearing as they may want to, or as we may request.
The point of order is well-recognized, so is that a motion, Mr. Fineran?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there a second on the motion? The request, is your request that town council be engaged?
Yes, engaged and in the room.
Is there a second on this? All right. Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion will continue. Thank you.
So I, I don't understand the request, to be honest with you, Mr. Fineran. Over the past four, five, six months, I've heard you say that our office is not sufficiently competent to represent this board in this matter.
You never heard that.
I did.
No, you didn't.
I heard it from your mouth. I'm not done. So we acquiesced, even though the resources of town council's department are within my purview to, to monitor and to oversee. I acquiesced here because this is an important issue, and I understand that. And this board was able to go out and hire one of the preeminent, very capable, highly respected 40B experts in the field. And I hope you all appreciate what a gem you have in Attorney Pucci. But in acquiescing, it was with the caveat that our office would no longer be representing the ZBA on this particular matter.
When was that expressed?
I expressed it to the town manager.
We never, no one on this board expressed that.
Well, it's not your decision to make, Mr. Fineran. It's really not. You don't have any ability to manipulate the resources of town council's office. The decision was made with or without you. You can vote all you want, but that doesn't make a determination about whether or not our office is used. Now, here, in this particular situation, Attorney Pucci is here. And again, he's one of the finest experts in the field. This board is ably represented, and Mr. Pucci does not show up alone. He brings with him a team from KP Law. You don't need any more attorneys for show, for whatever it is that you're asking for now, but you don't get to assemble your own legal team. So Brian and I are, at this point, not representing the board on this particular project. We represent the town. You don't get to have it both ways.
How was that? We can't ask for all the help we can get?
You can ask.
I'm speaking now. I mean, you said that it somehow was intimated that we didn't want your help. That's absolutely not the case. And again, I mean, the motion was made and seconded, so I'm not the only one who requests this and thinks that this would be beneficial to us.
It's not your determination to make.
I respectfully disagree. I think in the past, historically, when we have special counsel, we don't have town council. Maybe for a number of legal reasons or procedural reasons, or just efficiency of town council, so.
How many?
I'm speaking. Thank you. I personally don't see the need to have town council here at every meeting. It doesn't prevent us from, I hope we don't have to, go through Mr. Pucci to go to town council, or to just go to town council if we have a question. So I don't see the need to have, nothing against the lawyers, a third lawyer up here at every meeting.
First off, I didn't say they had to be up here. I just like them in the room. And what experience do you have while you were on the board when we hired outside counsel? I don't believe it ever happened. Did it?
Jerry, you gotta turn your microphone on.
I was on the board when we had Longfellow. That was a pretty big project at the time. Town council didn't show up. We had Mr. Brodsky and Mr. Havity show up. We can also ask the town administrator if procedurally, maybe we could do it, whether we have done it or if it's a good idea to have town council and special counsel. Special counsel is representing us. Town council represents the town, if I remember, if I understand this. There shouldn't be a big difference on this yet. Maybe there will be. Maybe we'll come up with a recommendation one way at town. I don't even know if town council would even suggest a condition or a recommendation.
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
It is not within our purview. We would never step on the toes of Attorney Pucci. And you bring up an excellent point that I'd like to clarify a little bit further. In this instance, Attorney Pucci is your attorney, and Brian and I represent the town. And right now, while this 40B project is being considered before this regulatory board, the town has no jurisdiction over the decision. I can't advise you on this. You are ably being counseled and advised by Attorney Pucci. I'm not needed here.
Are there any other questions for... Are there any other questions for town council?
I apologize, I guess, from a process-based perspective, being from the private sector, I have my own attorney, we hire outside counsel, outside counsel will come to the inside counsel and recommend things, but they're fundamentally still only a consultant. My inside counsel always had last say. I, I, I don't want to mischaracterize what, what I'm thinking of. You are the town, you are my best stock, you're the person that I have my trust in because I know you better. You and Brian do a great job. What my understanding would be is that you stay abreast of what's going on so that fundamentally, if something was going potentially incorrectly, you would have your discussions with the attorneys and that you could have some corrective action if needed. But you can't defer that.
Defer? I'm sorry, defer what? I don't understand that part. Defer what?
Responsibility of what's happening in this, in this hearing.
Responsibility was rested from me. I want to, I want to make that really clear.
I apologize because I'm, I'm telling you, from a process-based perspective, I never thought that that was the case.
That was the case.
I thought town council superseded hiring outside firms as consultants or advisors. So I guess what I was only asking for here tonight is, is not to drive through a bunch of things. I would like to have town council be involved enough to be a check on what's going on. And I think that as town council, you should know that and you should be helping us to be as successful as we can be. That's, that's the only ask.
And it, perhaps if this had played out a different way and the board had taken my advice and allowed me to, in our office, to represent the board and for us to have our consultants and hire outside counsel, then that would have been the case. But, and this is no disrespect to Attorney Pucci whatsoever, and I apologize for having this conversation in front of you, having never met you, and I hope to meet you perhaps after this conversation. But, um, what happened here is the board took away the authority of town council and gave it to someone else. So I don't have authority here. I now represent the town and not this board. And that was the agreement, to be able to give you the town council. Otherwise, like, let's say that you had taken my advice and allowed me to continue on as I said that I could and should, then if I needed additional counsel, I could have hired more people and they would have been on my team. And here, I'm, we're not on the same team. And it's not that I don't agree with him or that he doesn't agree with me, it's just that you made the decision to walk away from the, from the counsel that my office was offering and you wanted to hire your own guy.
But if we, I, I just personally didn't understand that that would be the outcome.
And that's, that's how, that's how it, that's how it came out. That's how it played out.
That was not the intention. And, and let me be perfectly honest with you. It seems like you took this personally and you're putting your personal feelings in front of what's best for this town.
That's absolutely incorrect, Mr. Fineran. It's truly unfortunate that you don't remember calling my competency into question, but it is what happened.
I did not say that. My exact words were during that meeting, that you guys are in over your heads. Perhaps it was the wrong choice of words, but it was reflective of sometimes we would have to wait a week to get an answer because you are very busy.
Mr. Chair.
Hence we ask, I'm speaking.
I said, sorry.
Hence we ask for additional outside help. We never asked that you would not help us anymore. You made that determination.
So, just so we're clear going forward, because again, this is a unique situation here. This is, this is a unique project. And I will say right now that you are in great hands here. And I'm, I'm not needed. And I understand that you have a special relationship with Attorney Tobin. And I hope that that continues on. It's necessary for the full working of this board with our office. I really hope that...
He absolutely makes me better.
Great.
And I know I'm not the only one.
I'm happy to hear that.
So we're being denied that.
No. So let me, let me finish my thought, though. So, what hap, what, where are we going to stray here? And I think the board understands this, is that you started taking votes and making decisions about the resources of my office without including me in that conversation. You made a decision, you took a vote without asking me to demand that the select board order me to get outside counsel. I don't, I don't even know where to start with that. I, that's not how this works, you know, we should have...
That transpired over the course of about four months. And we, we came to an agreement that we thought, if we thought we needed additional...
Mark, please, just let her, let her finish and then follow up.
And I'd like to interject when I can.
Let, let her finish, please.
In the future, I really want us to work together and have the communication be better. Our office, and I will say, I have been saying this for months, I will continue to say it, our office is fully capable of representing this board in any matter. I am ecstatic, over the moon, that Attorney Pucci is here to assist you in this particular, in this particular case. Going forward, I'm not going to acquiesce and I will be the counsel for this board happily and ably. And if we decide together that we need special counsel because my resources aren't sufficient within the office or if there are unique circumstances, then we'll do that together too. But you went around me. And that's where we are. This decision wasn't made. We don't have a working relationship. But we don't need one because, because KP Law and Attorney Pucci is all you need. And, you know, if you do have a question, it doesn't mean you can't call Brian. If any of you have a question, it doesn't mean you can't call us. We still represent the town, but we might have to defer back to Attorney Pucci on some of the questions because it's just not our jurisdiction at this moment.
Point of clarification?
Jerry.
I, if I understand you correctly, it's a bad choice of word. The die is cast. It may be, it may not be illegal, maybe it is improper for you to represent us now that we have special town council.
It's just not the relationship here and it's not needed.
Okay, I th, the other thing is, just for the record, I want to disagree with some of the things, uh, other, another board member had said. At least two of us fully understood when we said it was a little bit premature and we voted, and nothing against you, uh, that we should wait before we hire special counsel. So I don't think you can characterize the board in its entirety based on a brief discussion of what you thought or what I thought. The vote was three to two. And, uh, I don't think we went into some of this discussion, but my point is, maybe if we did, we still might have opted for special counsel. I might have voted yes then because I understand it better now. But I never thought town council was going to be up here with special counsel. Thank you.
Well, that would make you a no vote. This is still up for a vote and, um, I still maintain that, uh, we need all the help we can get. And, uh, it certainly seems that you, you're willing to deny it for reasons I don't understand.
I want to be really clear here, um, about one thing. It's not that I'm refusing to help you, so I don't want to ca, I don't want you to cast me as the villain here when things go south for you, that you can say, well, town council wasn't here and it's all her fault. I want to make sure that that doesn't happen. I'm, I'm here to tell you that I'm simply not your lawyer on this case. I'm the town's lawyer. You already have a lawyer. That's all.
And we want more. I certainly do.
Well, could we move for vote if there's no more discussion?
Do you have any question?
A couple of things have bothered me here. Um, one, the request seems to be to have Associate Town Counsel Tobin be the one, uh, when you talk about town council. That's not really your purview to make that request. You requested the office of town council and town council decides who comes to these meetings, not you. You don't request anybody in particular, they decide. Secondly, I don't see any point in having town council just come here and sit and listen to everybody when we have counsel at the table, counsel has been chosen, counsel has been selected. This idea of all the help we can get is an illusory idea. We have all the help we can get in the presence of Mr. Pucci and I think we should rely on him and going forward, we should rely on him. Now, if he wants to talk to town council, he's free to do so. We'll give him the phone number, they can contact each other. But the presence of that, at these meetings serves no purpose.
I disagree because, uh, I disagree because, uh, I often have questions and, um, it's been my habit of late to direct them to Brian because he has been the one who's been helping us. I mean, many of these questions probably don't warrant me seeking Mr. Pucci. I just need him as a filter. He's made me better and, um...
So again, I go back to my first question when I first came up here. Is this request about just giving you an attorney? You want your own personal attorney? Because that's what you just said.
It was, it was seconded, so obviously it's not just myself.
I'm just trying to figure out what the request is about because it...
Every, all the help we can get, that's what it's about.
You have all the help you, you could ever need.
That's your determination.
And, and I'm in a better, I'm in a better place to determine that.
Also, the, uh, the idea of having, um, one member of this board consulting with an attorney when other people are not present, we don't know the questions that are asked, we don't know the question, we don't know the answer that's given, it's just a bad practice. If you have a legal question and you need it, ask Mr. Pucci.
Mr. Chair, I, I know you want to speak. It's also my understanding under the procedures that if we have a question of anybody outside of this board, we go through the town administrator. We do not call up the town council, wastewater superintendent, the planning board person and say, hi, this is Jerry Potamus, I need to know this. We go through, those requests should go through our administrator and that's in our procedures.
Just to be clear, you, you mean the zoning administrator, not the town administrator?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Potamus, though, to, to Mr. Fineran's credit, I did offer the services of our office directly. I told any one of you, if you had a question, that you could reach out to me. And I'm glad to hear that Mr. Fineran has taken us up on that offer and has developed a relationship with this, with Associate Counsel Tobin.
Questions on this side?
No, we have great town council and we, and I guess for myself, I didn't understand the process that when we went to hire outside counsel, that town council was out of that process. I, I just didn't understand that. And for that reason, I always thought that you should be available to us and it sounds like you're still saying we could pick up the phone and chat with you, barring some of, some of the comments from other board members. So if you're still going to make yourself available to us, that's what we're hoping, my personal hope is.
And I hope you do, but again, I, I will reiterate that if it's about, if you're seeking advice about this project at 375 Sandwich Road, I will defer to your special counsel on this project. But I, my door's open. You can email me. I'm really good at responding to emails, I'm not great at returning phone calls, but I'm trying to get better at it. But my door's open.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion on the motion?
Just to be clear, uh, no vote, uh, if we don't support it. It's not that we don't have it. It's, makes no aspect, it makes no disrespect to town council. We're just, I would be simply saying, I don't think we need town council, period, because we have adequate representation for 40B purposes. Is, is that an accurate, uh...
For this project?
For this project. Accurate representation?
I'll, I'll just add that a, a yes vote doesn't assure our, our presence. Because this board does not control the resources of town council's office. That is not your decision to make. And I am, I have, I think I've made my position clear on this and, um, I don't see that...
It's kind of ambiguous.
I don't see the town manager here, but I know that the town manager also agrees with me.
So for clarity before we vote, a yes vote is to affirm the request to keep town council in the loop, the no vote is to just preserve the status quo, that we are continued to be represented by Mr. Attorney Pucci as special town council. Is that going to be clear in what the...
No, no, there was never any question of us not being represented by Mr. Pucci.
Agreed. Yeah, he's staying.
He stays on...
He's staying.
Of course.
Yeah.
Keeping the status quo at this point, town council is not...
You can't let him go. He's, he's the guy.
Well, the status quo for me is I reach out to Brian whenever I have something that I don't understand. And, um, that was basically pulled from us and, um, I'm voting yes anyway.
When you say in the loop, I'm confused about that. There's a question of whether or not town council is aware of what's going on or is physically present. What do you mean?
Well...
No, I'm talking, I'm talking to the chairman right now.
What's your question? I'm sorry, Frank.
All right. You rate, you use the phrase in the loop, keep town council in the loop. Does that mean they be, they are aware of what's going on or they are physically present? There's a difference.
Well, ask for clarification on the motion.
I know from experience that being in the room is absolutely necessary. You can't get enough information from watching it on FCTV as good of a job as they do. Um, there's just certain nuances. Like I said, I, I've been at selectmen's meetings for the last twenty years and watching it at home does not compare. And we need every arrow in our quiver.
I just want, so I just want to make sure that your, that I've got the motion to have your, is the request that someone from town council be physically present here?
Absolutely, in the room. That's why, it can be up there, it doesn't necessarily have to be at this table. But, um, you know, I mean, he's become a very valuable resource to me. And, um, I, uh, know that my game, if you will, has improved and I hear it from the public all the time. Um, and to deny us that, I think, is not correct.
Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Is this a vote for the entire board or just the voting members of the, for the board? I don't, I think...
Theory, I'm happy to extend this to all voting members. Excuse me, to all members. To all seven members.
I need clarification because I don't know what I'm voting for.
Mr. Fineran is requesting in his motion, please correct me if I'm not getting the sum and substance of it, is that town council be physically present to assist us at all hearings concerning 375 Sandwich Road. Is that correct?
Yes.
So that's a yes vote.
That would be a yes vote. A no vote is just no, that we're not, that the request, that we're not endorsing, that the request fails, the motion fails as we're been, as we're represented by special town council. Is everybody clear on the motion?
Can, before you vote, can I just say one more thing? And again, this is, this all started off in the wrong place with you guys voting without asking me and you did it again tonight. I just happen to know that this was happening. You know, I've said it before, I'll say it again, you guys can call me. If you, we had just had a conversation instead of you constantly voting to tell me what to do, maybe things would be different right now, but they're not. We ended up here where I don't represent you right now. So go ahead and vote.
I'll call the question at this point. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
No. Leave, that's five to two, that's no. Your no. So five, uh, two in favor, five opposed, the motion fails.
Thank you.
Number three, board discussion. Board updates? Future agenda items? Um, we will be having an executive session at the next meetings, am I correct, Norrie? No.
So I do have a question. I know the board voted the minutes. Did you include the executive session minutes?
Yes, yes, I did.
Within that? Okay, I just missed that.
Thank you for asking for clarification. It's to approve, it's just to approve at this point.
And not release.
Correct. Yeah, we haven't voted to release. That's a separate vote.
Okay, so that was the, that was part of the request, I think, was to, so you're voting to approve them and what was, was there a vote to release them?
Is there an appetite for the board to release the executive session minutes? Is there an appetite for the board to release the executive session minutes?
I can't remember what's in them.
I think-
I think tabling till, uh, the next regular meeting is fine at this point. So, we'll, we take up releasing them at the next, uh,
Okay.
Our next meeting. It's 29th. Future agenda items? Right, so the next scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals will be February 29th, 2024, 6:00 PM at the Sleckman's Meeting Room. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Scott, is there a second?
There's a second.
Mr. Finneran, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.